Good evening. Welcome to the March 22nd, 2022, meeting of the Hatfield Select Board. I'll call the meeting to order, and as usual, I'll open up by reviewing our public participation policy. The Hatfield Select Board welcomes everyone to its meetings and all other public meetings of the town of Hatfield. All regular and special meetings of the boards and committees of the town of Hatfield shall be open to the public and shall conform to the open-meeting law. Executive sessions are closed to the public and will be held only as prescribed by the statutes of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. It is important to recognize that the open-meeting law affords the opportunity to listen to the proceedings but not necessarily participate. During the meetings of the Select Board, an attempt will be made to find a balance between hearing from members of the community and conducting the required business of the Hatfield Select Board. And then also, usually, our first order of business after that is public forum. Are any of you here for public forum? No? Jay, you're not here for public forum. Okay. I wonder, is anyone joining us online who might be here for public forum?
Nope.
Okay. If you are joining us, if you could mute your microphone if you're not speaking, that would be helpful as well. Okay, so since no one's here for public forum, I will...anyone have any announcements, Ed, or?
No.
I have no announcement.
Nope. Happy spring, everybody, that's all.
Happy spring. You stole my thunder.
Happy spring. Well, great. We can get right into this because we actually have quite an agenda this evening. So next is the approval of the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of March 15th, 2022.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Easy enough. And then we'll get into our posted business. Topic one, community preservation is coming in to discuss the proposed pedestrian bridge project. And Bob Wagner is joining us here. Bob, you want to come up to the microphone?
Sure. Bob Wagner, 221 Lindsay Road, Chair of the Community Preservation Committee. And John Wilts, our Treasurer of the committee, is here as well.
Do you want to come up to the mic, Jay?
Say it up here.
So I provided the board with a memo dated February 28th, sort of outlining some of the issues that the committee has been wrestling with. And so we wanted to get the guidance of the Select Board on this particular project. We could maybe jump, if you want, I can, if you have any questions about the background and the budget, I'd be happy to answer them. I don't know how much of that we want to talk about. Sure.
On the report that I have here from you, under background, it says that the CPA grant of $5,000 to conduct feasibility study, and town meeting approved a grant of $185,000, but there's only $142,963.79 left over. So I'm just a little confused because 5 minus 185 is 180 and not 142,963. So was other funding?
Yeah, so there was a $5,000 grant in 2014 for the feasibility study and a cost estimate. When that was completed, another application was submitted for $185,000 to do the work. And an RFP was submitted, was subsequently put out, and none of the bids came in even remotely close to that. So the difference between the 185 and the 142,963 was the cost of this second, more extensive engineering analysis conducted on the structural integrity of the bridge and its pillars. So that cost, you know, $43,000 and change for that stuff.
Okay, so I misunderstand how I read it.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So that's where that came from. So there is $142,000, $143,000 roughly still available for the project, which has been there since 2015. So we're considering now a new submission for additional funding of $400,000 to complete the project. That budget is loosely based on that cost estimate that was done back in 2014. There's some adjustments that were made, you know, to somewhat reflect additional costs, but not an extensive cost estimate, just really an estimate, if you will. So I had discussed with Phil the idea of actually putting the project back out to bid over the winter or this late winter, early spring, so we could get a better handle on exactly what that additional cost might be. Because I think the committee is a little concerned about, you know, putting up another grant proposal, application, having it passed, and then we do another RFP, and it comes in and it's blown out of the water. We've got that much more money sitting there for this project. The other thing, issues that were raised by the committee, which again is the reason why I wanted to speak with you tonight, is just the status of the dam on the Mill River is in such flux right now. You know, we know that the state has asked the two owners to either fix it or take it down at their expense. And we don't really know where the two owners stand on this officially. I mean, we've heard from one owner that they're not interested in doing anything, but, you know, there hasn't been anything officially said to the state regarding the status of the dam. So if, you know, the dam were to be improved, that would be fantastic. I mean, this is an iconic visual, you know, contribution to the town of Hatfield. And it is very historic, as you all know. But if the dam were to be removed, you know, what's the impact then on the pillars and the integrity of the supports for that original bridge? You no longer have an impoundment behind it, which is sitting water, plus you've got all that silt that's built up as well that's holding it. And then, as we point out, so we could find ourselves with a bigger problem and then thus a bigger project. But then, as we also point out, if the iconic waterfall is gone, does that diminish the public support for, you know, really enhancing this area of the town into a recreational venue without that dam and the waterfall and the noise, the sound and all of that? And also, if the dam were to be removed, you're going to have, you know, there's still going to be a stream, a river. I doubt if I'd call it Mill River anymore. I might call it Mill Stream. But you're going to have a stream running underneath that, which is not unlike the view you get from the bridge we have right now on Prospect Street, where you can walk across. And if you want to look over at the river, you can look over. I don't know if people fish off of that bridge, but, you know, whenever I walk across it, I usually stop and look down on the river. You're not going to have a very different scene from that. So I would say, and John, correct me if you think this is wrong, but I got the distinct impression from the committee that the consensus might be that since we've been waiting, you know, since we've had money since 2015 for this project, the bridge has been there for whatever, 80 years or something like that, that perhaps it makes sense to just table this for a year because apparently the state wants an answer from these owners in 2022. So we will have a better sense at this time next year what we've got, what we're dealing with. Are we dealing with a bridge over an iconic waterfall? Or are we dealing with a bridge that may still be valuable to restore and renovate as a walking bridge, maybe a bridge of flowers, as has been suggested by some supporters of the project? But we'll also then know if the dam is no longer there, is that something people really want? And if they do, do we have a bigger project or the same project as it relates to the pillars and the stability of those piers associated with the bridge? That we, you know, that we don't really know for sure what the impact of taking the dam out will have on those. So anyway, we wanted to present this to you, and that's why I wanted to get the memo to you when I did. So if you had a chance to think about it individually, you could give us some, our committee, some guidance. We have one more meeting. We've submitted our articles as either definitive or placeholders, but we have one more meeting in which we can take an action on this project next week, next Wednesday.
Yeah, it might be wise to wait a year to find out what's going to happen with the dam. I know there's been some motion with the state of if there's any grants available for dams of that size. And I don't think we've heard anything back, have we?
No, we missed it. They didn't give, the state did not give municipalities very much time. It was sort of four weeks, you know, you had to have an application. And I had met with the owners at the Old Mill Inn. And we need to have, you know, an engineer take a look at the structure. And so you had to be able to submit some type of engineering plan.
Will they have that grant, I'm sorry?
They'll have that grant again, same time, the end of this year.
Okay.
And we would just need to be prepared to submit the application. We were not in a place to do that.
I think part of it was the timing of the changing of hands of the mill, of the Old Inn. So I would agree with Ed. I think we should stand down for this year. While I believe it's a worthy project. But I also just want to reiterate that the dam is privately owned. It's not a town dam, for those people that are listening.
If indeed they do apply for a grant, and they do wish perhaps to apply for CPA for some assistance as a matching grant for, I mean, it is a historical structure. I mean, you know, it's, I mean, I think that it would be, you know, the dam and retaining the dam, the waterfall, it's not the dam, it's the waterfall, right? That's what people see and hear and look at, take pictures of. You know, I'm sure that would enjoy public support, but we don't know how much this is going to cost and all that big stuff.
I mean, I would agree. I think, you know, maybe it's a little premature, given what we don't know about the dam and potential grant opportunities and those types of things. You know, quite frankly, we could put this out to bid this year and not have great response anyway, just because of the climate we're living in right now with workforce issues. So we may not really be missing much by putting it off a year.
Right.
So I'm all for putting it off.
Okay.
I mean, it's going to, what we all want is for it to be a great project.
Right.
And a great result. So there's some ducks we need to get in a row.
Well, I know what some of us quickly were worried about is that if we did bring it forward and it did pass, and as you pointed out, Diana, we might not even get a really good bid this year, or we might have the flux of the dam. We have that much more money sitting aside that can't be used for other projects because it's been set aside and it's just there. So.
Right.
I mean, I've been told that 2/3 of that dam is waterfall. I don't know if that's correct.
Yeah, I don't know. One of our members, Amy Hahn, has done a fair amount of research into the dam. And there's a book about this thick of the analysis done by the state that you can read through. But well, I appreciate your input on this, so.
But I think there'd be a big impact to the town if the dam was removed, and also an impact upstream to the wildlife and stuff that's on that. I think that'd be devastating to that whole ecology.
Well, it dramatically changed the environment that now is above the dam. It would return it to what it was before the dam was put in, but there is a whole new environment up there that, you know, the wildlife back there and the birds and it's amazing. But, all right. Well, thank you. We appreciate this opportunity.
Thanks, Bob, and your committee. Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much. Okay, next, Chief Flaherty. Hi, Bob.
How are you?
Good.
How are you?
Good. So I'm before you tonight. This is, I submitted a letter back on February 17th for the ambulance abatement. So the town's policy says that the fire chief's supposed to go through and look at any basically uncollectible ambulance revenue. It had gone a little bit undone for a few years, and this will be now the third time that I've come in front of you since I took over. So the number is getting a little bit smaller because we have people that are either paying their bills or they've gone past the point, and that's what this is here. So the information's already gone off to the accountant, our coastal medical billing, and FFR collections. So we're looking for an abatement of $5,066.89 that has now been determined to be uncollectible for ambulance. So.
Good job.
Yeah.
It is our recommendation that that be approved. I believe you guys have to do the official vote.
I'll make a motion to abate the seven incidents for $5,066,089 as presented by the fire chief.
Second.
A motion made in second. Any further discussion? I just want to point out, just for people at home, just so that they know, I mean, some of these date back to 2009.
Correct.
Most are 2014 and 2015, but these are entirely uncollectible.
Yes. They've, both coastal medical billing, they go through a three-step process, and then it would get turned over to the collection agency. And then they go through a long process to see, and they try to get people on even payment plans. And we do have a handful of people that are on that right now. These are ones that they've been completely exhausted and/or the person has passed away, so we can't get the money out of that anymore. So it just helps clean up the books when it comes time for the audit. It's not a potential receivable.
So all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This is in the signature file, but there's no signature spot on it? It might have been just in with the appointments.
Now, we'll send a letter to you, just, you know, letting you know that the board has authorized, authorized the abatement.
Yeah, it has already gone off to the billing. This is just so that way it goes to the accountant and the treasurer, so they can take it off the books for the, ultimately, I have the approval to make the abatement. You just have to accept it so it stays at the town level. And I believe the other item that was on there was a little bit about the membership.
When I got my pack.
A little bit.
Wow, that's a big one. That is like all the employees for the fire department.
So hopefully, the three of you don't end up with carpal tunnel from signing all of the employment. But I believe we're up to, should be about 14 or 16 that are sitting there. I do have a few more that have come in. I just met with a gentleman today. So we have already officially hired 12 new basics, one new medic. There's two current basics and a current medic that are going to be picking up the per diem shifts on the weekends. And then I have four more prospective paramedics that I'm either met with or meeting with to help cover the shifts. And we started those as of this past weekend. So.
If you would, thank you. Why don't you just say again exactly what this is for? I mean, it's for weekend coverage, just for the folks at home, just?
So we, I met with both, obviously, the finance committee and the Select Board between December and January. The call volume for ambulance and fire both have seen a pretty steady increase over the last few years. So we're fortunate enough, thank you, for finance and Select Board to approve some ARPA funds to be able to cover the ambulance between, it was originally going to be the first weekend of February, but it took longer to onboard everybody, get physicals to make sure that they were cleared to work. And it'll be funded through the end of June as of right now to cover Friday night, Friday evenings, and then 16 hours on Saturday and Sunday to cover the ambulance. And some of the folks that we've hired are dual roles. So they're helping cover the fire calls and the ambulance calls while they're here.
And so we haven't been missing calls on the weekends?
So this past weekend was the first weekend that it actually happened. We didn't have anybody for the Saturday shift. Some of the folks that I've hired, they were, they're college kids, and they were still on spring break up until about Saturday afternoon when they came back to the area. But we had two calls over this weekend. We did cover both of those calls. So we are, I mean, we're still missing a few calls here and there because there's still other days of the week that we don't have coverage.
Yeah, yeah.
But other than that, you know, last week, Northampton came in the middle of the day, and it got back to me, somebody was complaining at why is Northampton here in the middle of the day? It was because Hatfield Ambulance was already on a call. I can only handle one at a time. So you still may see mutual aid coming into town. It doesn't necessarily mean that we are not covering it.
Right.
It could be that we're already committed to another call, but it could be that we are not covering the calls. Beyond these new positions, I've mentioned it before, I'm essentially running the ambulance department with four people. I have a couple of people on the roster that they just don't go to calls. And I'm dealing with them. I've tried reaching out. Some of them don't even return my emails at this point. So they're close to the next step. I'm going to have to let them go because they're just not communicating at all.
Okay, so that, your comments about some of these being college students answers my question because some of them are from towns further away, and I was wondering how that works. But they're obviously students, so.
As of right now, two of them have confirmed that they will be going back to their home, their regular home, probably after the second week of May. A few of them are hanging around because they have apartments in this area. And then I already have a few others that are currently at school out of the area, who will then become available after the second week of May. So it'll kind of be a little bit of a flip-flop, but we still have the personnel. I'm still, I still hope to hire some more paramedics. Basics, I'm good right now, at least for the weekend shifts, but I definitely am still looking for some paramedics to cover the shifts.
That's great. Nice job.
Yeah, that's great.
It's important that there's coverage, obviously, weekends, weekends, evenings, weekend days.
Yes. And I want people to realize, and I want the three of you to realize, so, you know, we had a call Saturday, or Sunday evening, excuse me, about 8 o'clock. So the crew that was on was a basic crew. There was two basics that were working. I still went out and did that call to avoid having to tie up an ambulance coming from Northampton or from Pioneer Valley to do that because they needed a paramedic. So that is still going to be potentially there. If I can't fill the shifts with a paramedic, we'll do the best we can. We're trying to save the resources within the region.
Most of these look like EMTs.
Correct. There should only be one currently in there that's a paramedic for a new hire. And then the other one that I just met with today. So that will be coming forward at a later meeting.
Well, I can tell you that one that's in here, when I had my accident a few weeks ago, was in the ambulance with me, and is wonderful.
Yes.
He was with South County, and he was really great, so.
He actually, he picked up the first of the shifts Friday night, so.
Yeah.
He's very happy to be working here.
He was great.
Things are going to move along, I think, and we'll do the best we can. And hopefully that we continue it after July 1st.
Okay, so we can, do we need to take these up individually, Marlene? Each individual name?
No.
Okay.
They are just a signature. There is no vote required.
Okay, right. So I could have been signing this whole time. Yeah, okay.
No approval, just signatures to.
Fire chief has.
Verify.
That's right. That's right. But there's one more notice in here about the lieutenant. Were you going to speak to that?
Yes. Sorry, I forgot. With all the paperwork, I forgot all of them.
You're in trouble.
I know. I'm sure she'll get a lot of me. So we also had a vacancy at the lieutenant position dating back to officially as of last January, or first week of February is when he put in his letter. We had posted for the lieutenant's position. One of the applicants happened to be Carrie Flaherty, my wife. So I recused myself from the entire process. I gave, I handed over all the paperwork and everything that needed to be done to Deputy Chief Beldon, so he ran the entire process. They interviewed the two applicants at the time. They felt at that point neither of them were ready to be promoted. One of them had only been on the department a short time, and Carrie had only been coming back to drills because of her previous job for a couple of weeks. So they wanted to give it more time. We let it go for six months. We reviewed it. They felt that it was good to go maybe just a little bit longer. They asked me to repost the position as the deputy and the two captains, so I did. In this case, I only got the one additional applicant that came through, which was Carrie. I forwarded that information to Deputy Chief Beldon, and he had the letter that you have in front of you, that he recommended Carrie Flaherty be promoted to the rank of lieutenant. And then there's the official appointment letter that's coming from me. So.
So how does that work because of, I mean, we have obviously had family members on the department.
Yes.
Forever and a day. But, so I assume you're taking all the necessary ethical and everything.
Yep. So in general, any disciplinary action or anything like that that would come from with Lieutenant Flaherty would go through Deputy Chief Beldon due to my position and also my ex-to-deputy chief gone being family. Anything would go to Deputy Chief Beldon on a scene. Ultimately, I still have the authority to give orders on a scene because that's how that process works. But as far as logistics within the department or anything like that, everything essentially falls back to Deputy Beldon.
Well, and it, I mean, for as long as I've been in town, 40 years, there's been family members on the department, so.
Well, and I think it's important to point out that, excuse me, you know, your character, character, character of the department, certainly not a problem for, I don't think any form of term after me, but I think it's important that we ask our questions.
Absolutely.
So people understand, you know, the delineations between decision-making and side of things.
And when I was appointed chief, there was a paperwork that went to the ethics board at that time as well, knowing that ultimately the deputy chief and two firefighters were also related to me at that time. So there had to be some paperwork that was sent to them just to verify. And as long as it's.
Not uncommon. It's not uncommon, yeah.
Oh, no. Well, yeah, in this kind of department. So this that I have is just a photocopy. Do I sign this? Do we have to sign it, lieutenant?
Yes, just to verify that, yes.
Is it in the signature?
Oh, is it in the, maybe, maybe I did. Okay.
And I apologize. There was one little typographical error on that packet of paperwork there, but I left the old one so you could still see it.
The one that was in the signature file is the old one? But it's the, I think it's the old letter, but it's the right form?
Yes.
Yeah, the appoint.
I was correcting one of my own typographical errors.
Well, congratulations to Carrie. Thank you to Deputy Chief Beldon for being, you know, stepping up for that part of the process.
Thank you.
Okay.
That's it.
Do we need to take a break for a sec?
We'll see. Nobody wants to listen to me.
Maybe I just reached over and unplugged it.
I thought I'd say it before you did.
When I see him come, I'm like, okay, somebody's not working.
Testing, one, two, three, go.
Yeah, that was just a revision, but the inside was okay. Do you want it back for your records?
Thank you.
No, you get a special microphone. Okay, so next, are we ready to move on, John?
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks, Bob. Next, we have resignations. We have a resignation from Deborah Nimitz from the local cultural council. Didn't we just make this appointment? Is this recent?
A year ago.
Yeah, I was going to say, I thought we just.
It hasn't been that long.
Just appointed her. That's too bad. Okay, so we just need to accept this?
Yes.
I'll make a motion that we accept the resignation of Deborah Nimitz from the local cultural council with regret.
I'll second that.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Town administrator report, Marlene.
We have, in your packet is the proposed accounting services agreement from Melanson for fiscal year 2023. It's a 6% increase for services, and this is due to, you know, additional staffing, other resources.
Cost of doing business.
I was just going to say, the cost of doing business. And of course, we're seeing that with.
Everything.
Yes, with everything. Yeah.
I think that the auditor's report speaks for itself with the type of job that our financial team in town hall and Melanson as our accountant and picking up the extra responsibilities that they did for the COVID funds and ARPA and things like that. I think it's a very fair increase.
Yeah, well, I had asked, you know, the reason for the increase because it, when this was received, when I received this, there wasn't any kind of explanation for the increase. So I asked them, and I said, you know, although we're very happy with the services, and we've come a long way since working with Melanson. So.
Sure have.
I really don't think that that's going to hinder, you know, the town's plans going forward with Melanson, but.
I guess I was kind of hoping there had been so much work to get them started that, you know, this year we might recognize, they might have less to do.
Less work, correct.
But then you add in ARPA funding and CARES Act and everything, and it was a lot more.
And we're still doing, as a reminder.
And we're still doing, as a reminder for people, although I'm sure most people remember this, we're still doing the, this building and this accounting firm, like our treasurer and our collector are doing all the work for the school department as well. So everything funnels through here. So it's, it's not just the billing that, that might be generated through these departments, but it's, it's the schools as well.
Works with the, with the school. Matter of fact, you know, Lori is here on site once a month and it works out very well. And she also makes an appointment to meet with the school if necessary. And I know when she was here two weeks ago, she spent a couple hours at the school that day.
So this, this number was plugged into the budget numbers?
I have updated the budget with, to reflect this.
Okay.
I can, I concur with all of that. I mean, it's been great to have them on board. They took on a mess and they got us straightened out and, and I think it's.
And we want to stay that way.
They're a very good.
We want to stay that way.
Absolutely.
I'll make a motion to approve the term of agreement beginning on July 21st, 2022 and ending on June 30th, 2023 for Melanson Accounting Services.
Second.
A motion made and second. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And that agreement is in the signature folder as well.
Signing it right now.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, the activity.
Next item, I think if the board's okay, we can just table that.
Sure.
Yeah. Okay, I did update that form based on our conversations last week, but I think.
I didn't see it in here anyway.
Form?
No.
It's not in the packet.
So just so people understand what we're referring to is we're trying to tweak a activity slash event application form for, well, for the town, for, for usage of town facilities.
And, and the board did not approve it last week. So, you know, I was just referring back to the meeting notes from last week and, and it has been updated to reflect, you know, changes. And actually, I had a conversation with somebody during the week. Actually, it was an email, not a conversation. So I'd like to add some additional language about, you know, trash, picking up trash.
It's all done.
So, yeah, well.
It's only for me.
We'll discuss this in the future.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. We have plenty to take up our time tonight, anyway. Okay, topic number six, we're gonna review or revisit the pickleball proposal. Did you want to come up to the microphone?
Hi Julie.
Hi Julie. Good to see you. So we have, so people may remember you were in asking about if we could have some pickle, a pickleball court at the basketball courts here next to the fire station. We had some discussion about that and I'm seeing a, a letter of support about it and also, you know, a long list of names here of people who are 39 people's supportive of having that there. Some I recognize. Are these all Hatfield residents?
Everybody except Dina Polbureus.
Okay.
Everybody else isn't a Hatfield.
And then what's not in here, but just in fairness, we did get, I got an email forwarded to me, I think, from someone very much opposed to putting them in. So just in fairness, I do want to mention that, so.
I, I, I received that same email, but I, I'm not sure personally, I didn't take it so much as opposition, as much as concern about the sharing of, of the facility. Semantics, maybe.
Okay.
But I, I mean, concern, you know, I think the, I think the concern, and I think we talked about it actually at our last meeting, was what if people are waiting to play one, either basketball or pickleball? And what, what might be a process for, for doing that, right?
Scheduling it.
Scheduling it, maybe not so much of a big deal this time of year at spring, because most of the basketball usage is by the kids that are at school.
Right.
You know, until 2:00 or so or 2:30. I don't know if pickleball is, is more of a morning type thing or after dinner, but, you know.
We tend to be morning.
I still am, would like to find a spot separate. And I mentioned that at our last meeting as well. And I know the letter we received actually had taken some pictures and our, our out, our, the pavement at both schools is in rough shape, whether it's for basketball or pickleball. I mean, and we, we talked about this, so I'm, I don't want to just rehash everything. I think we don't right now necessarily have an, an option to separate the two. You know, unless we can use the schools after, after hours, gymnasiums. But I, I'd like to think that we're the type of community that we can work together and, and see how it goes until another spot perhaps more ideal for pickleball might be found, you know. You guys are a little more flexible with being able to move versus basketball hoops that are, you know, cemented into the ground. So. I, I don't have a problem supporting moving forward with pickleball being played.
Did you get a chance to look at the cones? You were gonna look at cones?
Julie and I met with last week. I mean, it, it's a nice setup, explained sort of the court size. And again, I, whether, whether there were more people that wanted to play pickleball or basketball, I don't mean more people, I mean like in line to play. And I, I just think it's going to be a cooperative type thing, you know, and.
And it can be played indoors in a gym, right?
Definitely.
So what would be nice is if, you know, once, because it won't always be nice, you know, when, winter will come again. That might even come again this year, but you know, it would be nice to have some type of where you, where people could have access to schools. I mean, I don't know how that works. I know there used to be adult basketball leagues and that sort of thing. Maybe David, David might be able to speak to that a little bit. Is there access to the gym for the public?
I've been talking to the school and when it's not basketball season, there is access. So I think I'm actually going to get access in the evenings starting next week.
Oh.
But when it's nice that people.
Sure.
So the, the, the problem is for inside play is the, the time when people want it most.
Is when you can't have it.
Can't have it. But, you know.
But so basketball season is eliminated entirely because it seems like, like at the elementary school, I mean, I know they have basketball games on the weekends for the youth programs, but it seems like maybe later in the afternoon or the evening. I mean, there must be a way to work out a schedule.
I'm talking to Jackie Pilk over at Smith Academy. She's the person that manages the community use of facilities. And she's checking in about the elementary school to see.
And who are you talking to at Smith Academy?
That's Jackie Pilk, yeah.
She does it for both schools?
She was just gonna.
From Christie?
Oh, that's right. She is. Yes, okay.
While they're searching for someone down here and she's kind of splitting her time right now.
Got it.
Okay, gotcha. As long as that dialogue is open, because that would be, you know, that would be an option too.
Issues that we've always had with, and this is not a criticism of anything, is handing out keys.
Right, of course.
And so keys go out and that group's supposed to use it, but then their buddy wants to use it, so they hand it off to them, then they hand it off to them, and somebody knows somebody who makes copies. And every couple of years, we end up spending hundreds of thousands of dollars rekeying the building because there's so many keys out there, there's so many people that have access and.
Well, now, Smith Academy has a FOB.
Yeah, they have a FOB and they charge you 25 bucks.
Yeah.
So it's, that's just something to.
Yeah.
Yeah, of course. I mean.
We definitely do a separate space, or you could just, you could also on this one out here, you could come up with a schedule that these days from this time to this time is basketball time.
We talked about that at the last meeting. We're, we're gonna just try to have it happen informally for now, I think. But, you know.
And. Two comments. One, of course, we don't want to mess it up for the kids because
Definitely.
the kids don't have a lot in town. This is where they congregate. This is where they play. So, you know, when they're after school. May, I mean, in the morning, pickleball could be possibly held. And now you talk to the school. I mean, we've had adult basketball. Maybe something can be worked out there. But the second item I was thinking, have we ever had, say, somebody from REC, somebody from Open Space, somebody from CPA, sort of like a subcommittee to look at the possibility of maybe it's time for another court someplace in town? Maybe we should, since we have interest in pickleball and maybe we have interest back at tennis, maybe it's time to research or have a subcommittee do some investigation. I know we can't have anything at the school because of the core e checks and the rules and regulations up there, but maybe it's time for, to bring it back. I'm not sure. I'm just asking.
REC committee is looking at developing a proposal for CPA funds to build probably a combination tennis and pickleball facility. So that's, that's in the process right now.
Have they designated where they're thinking of having it?
That is one of the big challenges.
No, I don't think. I mean, I think they're just, just starting to get it. But I mean, it really kind of shines a light on how, you know, inadequate our recreational facilities are here in Hatfield, given, you know, really, which is kind of surprising, right? Given how many families live here and how dedicated this town is to its sports and athletics. There aren't a lot of places for people to really have, you know, a variety of recreational opportunities. But maybe this will be a little bit of a starting point, so.
I hope so. That'd be great.
Oh, Bob?
Yeah, so on the subject of tennis courts, the open space plan, which actually is being revised right now, but the one that we currently have. Now, that was written 10 years ago. Pickleball didn't exist 10 years ago. If it did, it was in someone's dreams. Tennis courts are a high priority in the open space plan. And I'm sure that as they update that, there'll be a modification for that because, you know, there's tennis courts all over the country right now that have the pickleball inserts and it's either tennis or pickleball. And then they're fighting with each other as opposed to basketball plays. Still, that is definitely on the radar for the open space committee, so.
Yeah, and for recreation, because Danielle spoke to it at the last meeting and, you know, and we had them before and they were great.
Where, where were they?
Behind the Breer Elementary.
Yeah, behind the, actually, they were kind of where the new school is.
Oh, tear down the school, put up the courts.
So, yeah, so I think that that, and to your point, Diana, I mean, this is a perfect use of community preservation funds that we, of course, didn't have until we passed that.
Right.
You know, it's, it's challenging.
Yeah.
When you educate your kids K to 12, there isn't a whole lot of money left over for the kids like this. And that's a great opportunity for CPA.
David?
If you go back and look at the, some of the original drawings of Smith Academy and how the, the fields were laid out, John, were you on the original Smith Academy building committee? The, the area right off the parking lot, that's that sort of lots, lofted area was, was put there for the specific purposes of putting tennis courts there if there was money, my understanding. And there was no money to do it at the time. But that area as it was shaped, was shaped to be able to do that. So there is a perfect place almost built in at Smith Academy and it's right next to the parking lot also.
Except that now also things have changed and we don't welcome people onto school grounds during the day, which is when probably a lot of people would want to use them. So that might not, even though you're right, it's the perfect spot in terms of the layout, it might not be.
Perfect spot for an extension to the parking lot of Smith Academy if we ever needed it, so.
That's, that's probably, yeah. Go ahead, John.
You know, not to piggyback anymore, you know, building on the school property, you also have this right behind the center school that was put aside, you know, for tenant, it could be used for tennis courts and, and pickleball courts, but you still have open space left back there. Just wanted to bring that to your attention. You know, if you build tennis courts, that's fine. You can have a tennis team at Smith Academy at some point. Probably not, but.
Never know.
And this would be a community thing versus, you know, school getting access through the school. Just think about that. Just one thing.
Yeah, I mean, there's, right. I mean, I, there'd be issues with where do you park? If you've got them back there, you know, whatever. But I, we're not going to get into all of that or make those decisions. But there's, I think we need to think about a recreation plan. And, and I think people are, if you're talking about open space and recreation commission, so. All right, so.
More of a, if it's combined, instead of each little group doing their own little thing, if they combine their forces together, they may come up with a, a better plan on how to do it. Because like you've mentioned, this group's doing something, that group's doing something, maybe it's time to combine forces. That's what I'm, that was my point. That's all.
Well, I think with the energy on the recreation committee that there is now and the fact that the open space plan is about to get started again with a grant from PVPC, right?
That's true.
It's a great opportunity for those two committees to work together because it is an open space and recreation plan.
Right.
Right. Great. Okay, so do we, we don't have, do we have to vote on this or?
Well, I think, well, I think Julie's just looking for some guidance, right?
I wouldn't mind a vote.
Well, I, I, I think the vote's simply gonna say it's, it's okay to play pickleball on the basketball court.
Well, to, to put the lines down, I think is the, the key.
So speaking of the lines, could they be a different color?
Yeah, I was thinking of blue. The basketball's white.
I was just thinking if, if there's really a game of basketball taking place and those lines are already down there.
Yeah, they're white, so I was thinking of blue. Does that make sense?
Makes sense to me. I don't, I don't have a problem with it. Is it paint, paint or?
It's paint, paint, yeah.
Okay. So it's.
I mean, given that they have to paint something on town property, we probably should give a vote.
Right.
That's not a bad idea.
Okay.
So I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the pickleball court set up at the town park. Enlining, enlining the.
Well, I, I think we need, again, conditions so the kids don't get, lose any time of their time that they use basketball. So, I mean, I'm willing to try this on a temporary basis, see how it works out. But I'd like to see how it all develops and if it interferes with the kids playing time and stuff like that. That's my only concern.
I'm sure we'll hear about it.
Oh, I know we will.
I think the board did express that this would be temporary last week at the meeting. And Julie, you had said most of the time it's in the morning that you play anyway, right?
I think pickleball people would be perfectly happy to like, when school is on, pickleball up until 2:00.
When, when kids are on vacation though, and during the summer, I expect they probably would be out there a little earlier.
During the summer, they're out there earlier, I think.
Yeah.
And I, I agree with, you know, it was built for basketball. Basketball should have priority. So pickleball should work our way so that.
Well, thank you.
Yeah.
That's the priority.
Right. Okay, well, let's, you want to give it a timeframe?
Give it a timeframe.
To the, maybe to June 30th? Breaking point?
They got us going at 2:00. They head down here at 2:00 o'clock.
Yeah, I would say so. Well, actually, this time of year, I don't know, a lot of kids are playing baseball, softball, but.
I don't, I, my personal opinion is I don't know that we need a timeframe for an ending point. I think we start it and, and let's let it unfold and, and work out any kinks and bumps and what have you. And then revisit, if we need to, the whole process, you know, the process as a whole and, and see. And in the meantime, perhaps other level cement will pop up somewhere in town.
And fencing and lighting and, yeah, sure. It's possible.
I already have a thought. I'll talk to you later.
Excellent.
Well, it sounds like we're all.
Yeah.
And understanding, so, I mean, if there's any concerns, we'll have you come back, so.
And Diana, I, I think Julie, who, who has been spearheading this, at least to us, made it perfectly clear to those families that may have some concern with, with the high school kids in the basketball courts that the courts are basketball courts and that, that is the priority. All I would say on top of that, though, is, you know, if there's a middle of a pickleball game taking place, don't come down and start shooting hoops, right?
Right.
So, and vice versa. So it's just, let's just all give it a whirl and try it and everybody, you know, just do what you should do.
Be kind and courteous.
Yeah.
Okay, but so.
I made a motion.
You made a motion.
Seconded yet or not.
Again, I'm willing to second that on conditions that we just try this out for a few months and see where it goes.
Okay. Is that part of the motion?
I think it sounds like it's part. I think it sounds like it's part of the motion.
Part of the motion, okay.
Is that okay, part of the motion?
Yeah, that's, that's fine. I mean, gotta get it off the ground and see what happens.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you for all your assistance.
Yep, and I'm happy to start teaching people how to play. If anybody wants to play, it'll help me.
That's fun.
Yeah.
Okay, so we are running just a couple of minutes ahead, which I'm shocked. Do we want to take a break? There's nothing else to take up because the rest of the.
Yeah, take a break.
We'll take a break. Okay, everybody, welcome back. We have been joined by our finance committee. If you're joining us remotely, could you mute your microphone? Because we get a little bit of feedback sometimes from that.
Paul, can you?
Yeah, Paula. Can you, can you mute your microphone?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Okay, still, these things still, two years into it, a little wonky. That's okay. So we are continuing our FY 2023 budget review. Been doing this weekly, getting through departments' budgets, department by department. So we have three tonight. The first is the planning board, and we're joined online by a couple of members of the planning board, and Bob is here in person. Bob's wearing all kinds of hats here tonight. Okay, so.
Stephanie's gonna do this.
Pardon?
Stephanie's gonna take.
Stephanie's speaking to this, okay. Stephanie, we'll just turn it over to you and let you explain your, your budget request.
Hi, yeah, so I, hopefully I'll be able to share my screen because I have a little chart that I want to share with you. But first, I'll just give you some, a little bit of background. This is the, for a third year in a row, we've requested funding for a part-time planner. The first year, the funds in the position were requested by then-chair Bob Wagner after having conversations with the Franklin Regional Council of Governments about potentially finding one or two other communities to share a part-time planner with to make one whole position between two or three communities. So last year, I requested the same, and again, I same, the same, I requested the same again this year. That's the only additional change as opposed to what we refunded last year. And in preparation for this year's budget conversation, I decided, I was planning to do research about other communities and that are similar size of ours, about planning resources and different positions that they have. And just when I was gonna start this research, I happened to get an email from the Deerfield Planning Board Chair. She was asking about potentially sharing a planner after she had conversations from the Franklin Regional Council of Governments, apparently probably the same person that Bob spoke to three years ago now. So the outcome of that conversation, the Deerfield Planning Board Chair and I, decided to divide and conquer by reaching out to neighboring communities about their planning resources. And I just wanted to share with you what we found, just because I found it interesting and think it would, it'll be helpful.
Can she do that? Karen, can she share?
Am I allowed to do so?
Can she share a chart on here?
She should be.
On her end, yeah.
Yes.
Okay, cool. It's, I just need to, like, give it permission for me to do so. Done.
She has to be made a presenter.
Of course, I have to quit and reopen, so I'll come right back. Sorry.
Yeah, I'll just add while we're waiting. So I have had conversations in the past with Deerfield, Sunderland, and Whately about a shared town planner. Deerfield at the time wasn't interested because they had somebody on staff.
Okay, thank you for your patience. Sorry when I have to give it permissions.
That's, that's all right, Steph.
Yeah, okay. Let's see, I was gonna share. I don't know how much it's, you can see of my screen. Hopefully all of this chart. Let me know if, can I, if I need to zoom in or not.
Yeah, if you could, because it's pretty, we're sharing screens here, so.
Okay, let's see here.
The biggest you can go, I think.
All right, now, so this basically is a chart, starting from the smallest towns to the largest towns.
Okay.
The Deerfield Planning Board Chair spoke to Franklin County primarily. Well, she, she, her half, she was focused mostly on Franklin County. And I reached out to similar-sized communities in, in Hampshire County and a few in, in Franklin County. So just some of the takeaways here. As you can see, like, some, a small town, as, as small as Irving, has an assistant town planner, and Whately has an assistant town administrator, which isn't have due direct planning support, but does provide project management across planning boards, the Planning Board Conservation Commission and other boards, and helping think holistically and driving projects, like zoning bylaw updates. The Conway is interested in more support. Williamsburg did, was the one community that didn't respond to the request. As you can see, Hatfield here, that's us. We have, the PVPC, we have, right now, we have Pioneer Valley Planning Commission support. Sunderland is, was the only community that we spoke to that is currently satisfied by their planning resources right now. The only community that didn't have other professional planning support on staff. Deerfield started conversations with their town administrator and now finance committee about professional planning support. They're in the same period of process that we're in. It's looking like they'll get partial funding, and it's something they're interested still in possibly exploring with, if we could do, we also, if we could also get funded. Hadley started a conversation with their town administrator about professional planning support. Southampton has also had, started a conversation with town, with their town administrator about professional planning support. You can see here that orange, which was, we were very surprised to find, has a planner, an assistant planner, two interns, and two volunteers on top of their planning board. So that was interesting to see. We also, and then Montague, the bigger towns here, yeah, like Orange, Montague, and Greenfield. Montague has a director of planning and an assistant planner, and Greenfield has director of planning and a part-time assistant planner. And then the dates here show, like, when they started implementing these positions and this. And so, you know, the oranges is robust and new. They, they utilize UMass interns right now. And then even the Irving and Whately positions are pretty relatively new as well. And then the ones that kind of sit closer to our population ranges are interested in more support, but, but do not have really any professional planning support. But while we look at this chart, some of the just primary advantages of us having a funded part-time planner on staff would be to help facilitate economic development and promoting zoning bylaws that are consistent with the vision of the town and, and town plans. Like, we're, I know, I, I could probably speak for the whole board of the planning board saying we're really excited about the, relooking at the master plan and the master plan committee, which will in turn come with reviewing our zoning bylaws. And doing so, having someone who's dedicated to Hatfield and has an eye on that would be really helpful, I think, as we go through updating our zoning bylaws over the next couple of years. It would also potentially reduce legal fees. I know that we've contacted our town council more, multiple times in the last, like, five or six months, more than we usually have. But I don't know if that, if that would, the cost, you know, billable hours for that. But that's something that, when we were speaking to other communities, they've noticed that it's reduced a lot of their legal fees and potential legal actions in some cases. And also, speaking to these communities, they'll, they said it relieved the burden off of other town staff and, and also frankly, volunteer, basically volunteer boards that don't necessarily have a robust background in planning. They also, these positions also help with grant writing and administration. I think Montague's planner said that he's funded himself times two each year with just grant writing. Also, what, it's, also help other committees to, thinking holistically about our zoning, you know, with Conservation Commission, Recreation, just thinking about the different ways we could all work together more on different projects and thinking about it all going towards our master plan. And just really make sure that there's long-term planning that takes place. We do have the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission right now, and they are, they are great. But right now, they have, as of recently, we've heard there's a lot of turnover and they haven't really been very responsive in the project that we're working on them with. They said it should be done by May this year, but we've only had one meeting with them. So there's like, obviously, we're getting benefit from the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, but it would be really helpful to have someone focused solely on Hatfield and thinking about Hatfields. And, yeah, I just, I think that's, those are the main themes that came up when we were talking. And what I just wanted to share with you and hopefully you found it, if, if anything, interesting and hopefully helpful in just considering funding our increased budget line item this year. Thank you. Anyone else on the board, would you like to speak?
Yeah, I'd like to say thank you, Stephanie. That was a great overview of all the research you've done. You know, when the board thinks about what's happened in Hatfield over the last just six to eight months, I mean, the new sewer line on Route 5, and then also the fact that Northampton is filling up there, having big issues right now with zoning infill and so on. And Hadley, of course, is, is either protecting a lot of farmland or they're developing a lot more on Route 9. I think it's fair to say there's going to be more pressure on Hatfield, which could be a good thing or it could be a bad thing if we're not prepared for it. And doing a new master plan is a, is really important. But being able to respond to these things and the kinds of projects that I think we're going to see coming forward, particularly on Route 5 and 10 on West Street with the new sewer lines, these are going to be projects that are going to have stormwater management plans, they're going to require significant review, engineering review, that we just don't have that expertise. Now, we can, you know, force the applicant to pay for reviews, but being able to be ahead of the game and having someone like a planner talk to those applicants and say, you know, you're just barking up the wrong tree here in this zone or, you know, or if you're going to do this, you have to do X, Y, and Z. It's been, it's been getting tougher and tougher in my experiences, my previous experience as board chair, and I'm sure Stephanie is feeling now as the chair. Because those questions come to us as chair.
So a planner would have the ability to deter someone from wanting to?
It wouldn't deter them, but they could, someone could come in and say, hey, I want to do X and Y. And you could say, you know, that planner could work with them and say, okay, well, you've got these setback requirements, you've got, it's in this zone, that's not allowed, or if it is allowed, it requires X, Y, and Z. Those kind of background things that make their application that much better and easier for the planning board. And it puts a lot of strain on a planning board that, you know, I have some planning background, but I'm not a planner by, you know, it's more by experience, not by education and the letters after my name. You know, Steph has got a lot of background on environmental stuff. Paul has been on the board for a long time, but he's leaving. So, you know, your planning board is not a volunteer, it's elected. But, you know, we make 750 bucks a year and we all have other jobs or other things. I mean, it's tough to do this.
And it's complicated stuff.
Yeah, it's complicated.
It's very complicated stuff, yeah.
May I ask a question of, of the planning board, whether it's Steph or Bob? So the increase that you're looking for, which is, again, the third year, so roughly, roughly $12,000 or $11,500, I think, is that Hatfield's shared amount with another community? Is that, is that what that's for? Is that the amount you're in that vicinity, probably?
Yeah, that's what we're hoping for to get started. And, you know, that, I mean, it is a shared amount. I mean, you're not going to get somebody for $11,000.
Well, I just want to, I didn't think so, but I just wanted to be clear that some, some other communities probably doing the same, requesting the same, or three communities or whatever, right?
Exactly.
I mean, that's, that's, so this would be our portion of a shared position. Is that right?
I see a number of $13,200. Where's the $11,000?
Well, there's already $1,700 there. There's already $1,700 in that line. So it's an increase of.
There's an increase of $11,000. Okay.
So are you, are you looking to have this funded with the hopes that there'll be a shared position created? You know, how far are other communities into this?
Right.
Well, right, it's kind of chicken and egg, right? Like, this community is saying, well, if you're not going to get fund, you know. So I know Deerfield is where, I know, because I've had the most conversations with Deerfield, they're asking for enough for, to help maybe get, they want, what they want is a part-time person, like a 20-hour person. And I feel like the money that we're requesting might be like a 10-hours-for-us kind of situation. However, I don't think that, given this is the first year, that they're going to their finance committee with this request. It will be fully funded with that. It's the, I think the Deerfield Planning Board person said they'll probably more likely come out with a number closer to what we're requesting. So I don't think in the first go, it would be something where we could fund, you know, a full-time person between two towns. Maybe it'd be a part-time person between two towns. Or maybe it's, if we don't, can't get, if the stars don't align with those, with at least Deerfield, if they're interested in that. And logistics, if we could figure out the logistics of that, it could just be, you know, our planning, part-time planning person that's willing, you know, maybe someone who's retired, making, trying to make some extra income that has been a planner or something like that. It is hard to try and keep people, and hire people for small, part-time positions, but. We also, being realistic with the requests that we're making, also knowing the town's finances and stuff, too.
Thank you.
So the net gain, you know, for the town, if you're, if you're standing up on town meetings, selling that, selling this, the, the advantage for Hatfield for having someone in this position is there could be reduced, some reduced legal fees. And probably the most important part is better long-term planning for projects that are coming into town. Is that fair and accurate?
Yeah, I think.
I'd say that, and with that.
A background.
It would also, I think, give our applicants a better, necessarily better experience, but feel more cared for or like, being able to have someone that they can talk to about certain things that is more of an expert than us and, you know, talking to Gerard in the town hall, for example.
And I think, I think Darrell, Stephanie alluded to this earlier. This person could act somewhat as a development officer, if you will, in the sense that if someone comes into town and they say, we want to do X on 5 and 10, they can say, well, you know, that's fine, but we've got a better spot that you might be able to consider doing that in and, you know.
But could that better spot be in another town?
Well, no, no, no.
So that was going to be my question. Are there, are there, do these shared positions exist anywhere locally that address those types of issues as well? Because, I mean, you could run into that situation.
Well, the COG, right? If the COG is providing this for several different towns, sure. That's an, that, that could happen.
I'm just curious what the agreements look like in terms of exactly something like that.
Yeah.
And I think the first hurdle was us to get funded for the first round, I think, too. Because that's, the logistics of all of that would have to be worked out. It's something that these communities would, you know, like, where are we gonna have an office for the person? Do they have an office? And thinking about those types of other things, too, is also a next step conversation. But I think the first step is, is for us to get your mark the funding and try to find someone to support us with this, so. I also see advantages also, like, if we were doing our master plan and then the other community maybe they're working with is redoing the master plan, you know, learnings as well and not also just a competition or moving resources to and from the other town.
Well, Darrell could.
Sean's got it.
Sean, just quickly, Darrell can speak to this as having been chair of the past master planning committee. I think Darrell would have loved to have had somebody like this who could do stuff between meetings. And that's what it's really all about, right?
That would make the master plan process.
Who does the work between the meetings?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a great.
No, it's really good point.
Stephanie, just in terms of logistics, I'm just wondering about, has anyone talked to the FERCOG itself about whether there'd be enough interest? Like, if Deerfield and Hatfield were all interested, say, would there be enough interest amongst other communities to actually hire somebody? Who, you know what I mean? To serve as a conduit essentially for the position? I mean, I know that's happened with other things before. It just makes the whole hiring benefits, all that process, much easier to manage than trying to just ad hoc manage it between two, three, four towns, whatever it is.
So you mean they'd be with the COG?
Yeah, well, yeah, I mean, like the, I mean, Hampshire County did that with a building inspector at one point. It's happened before, it's just, it's hard. It, for attracting a person, it's easier to attract a person to a full-time job that is divided up amongst towns than that pay into it.
More than like a circuit rider.
Then, right, then you get 10-hours here and 7-hours there, and then you have no benefits anywhere and, you know, like.
Yeah, and in this job climate, you're right, Sean.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Yeah, and that's something that, I think Bob can speak to the conversation he had with the FERCOG person three years ago. And then I can speak, that same person pointed the Deerfield Planning Board member to us and, because she, she knew that there are communities out there, but I don't know. It might be, you know, a neck conversation for, in order to get a full-time person and have something like the FERCOG being like the employer or something, so to speak, and we would pay to defray the cost of that role or something for FERCOG. I don't know, that's a, that's something, that, that sounds like it would probably be the easiest.
If you can get enough people interested, yeah.
Right, but also like knowing that that'll probably take, what, a year probably to talk about that and get that, you know.
Yeah.
It also, so.
But you have to start somewhere.
Going at this 12, or this $11,000 increase isn't, might not solve the long-term plan for that or for what we might envision for that role, but it would at least help get us some support that could, that could start sooner.
It's not a comment on whether we should do it or not. You know, it's only, I can only just envision the possibility of if it gets funded, you might not find anybody to do it for, you know what I mean? Because it's, I mean, what's, it's like 10-hours a week. So it might be difficult. I'm just sort of thinking ahead that we might have to see if there's several people interested and sort of try to create a full-time jobs, you can actually hire someone.
You're putting out to townspeople that you want this because you want to have a shared planner. But then you don't have a plan. And so, you know, in other words, if you're saying, you just were saying it would get us some help, so there'd be, you'd hire somebody in the meantime? So it wouldn't be, this isn't really seed money? I guess I'm curious about that.
I think it's kind of a starting point, isn't it?
Well, it's, I mean, it shows commitment too to the other communities that we're willing to.
I mean, if we.
Would you be using it for, like, just a freelance or is that what you're thinking in the meantime?
If I might jump in, I think it's a little bit of the pay-to-play. So if we come in with money, we go to FERCOG or we go to Deerfield and say, hey, look, we've got $13,000 to plunk down on the table. We want a, we want a piece of someone. And I think Sean's idea is a great one. If, I know we're in Hampshire, they're in Franklin, but if they can reside at FERCOG and be under their, you know, health plan and all that kind of stuff, but this person is dedicated solely to Deerfield, Waitly, and Hatfield at this split, then, then that helps that person out. And it helps us out because logistically, or, you know, we're not dealing with that.
Also a much more professional position at that point.
And they do become a circuit rider, but they're working for one entity that provides that, their overarching home, so to speak.
Well, you're right, at least it shows our interest and willingness to be.
And I'm sure there's some way to do, you know, like, you could probably come to some agreement to do that amongst a group of towns, but just when there's an organizational structure in place.
Yeah.
Yeah, and there is precedent for other share functions.
Yeah, absolutely.
I know Marlene, sorry, Marlene said she had a question.
I just wanted to ask Bob, and understandably, having a professional, an individual with the professional, with that professional background would be very important to have here on staff. You know, our administrative assistant can provide, you know, only so much, but doesn't have that professional background. But I wanted to ask you, I am aware that the planning board most often has, I don't know if you call it like a preliminary meeting with applicant, before they even start the application process because they have questions. And I'm thinking that if the town of Hatfield did have a part-time planner, that individual could probably eliminate those meetings?
That, that's exactly what they would be doing. And they'd be doing it, I think, at a deeper dive than we can do at our informal meetings when someone comes in. Because the folks that come in to do the informal meeting, they're not really sure how much to bring or how little or a lot to bring. And also, it's the first time we're seeing it. Whereas if you had somebody like a, you know, like a Wayne Feiden in North Hampton, they're doing all of that stuff with the applicant. So when it comes to the planning board, it's not a rubber stamp by any means, but it's like, look, I've vetted this project with these guys and here's what they would like to do. It meets this, it meets that. Here's the key issues you really need to focus on.
Which ultimately expedites the process for applicants and.
And for us.
And, and, yeah, yeah, for you.
I mean, we have had, I mean, you know, we have had in the last two years a couple projects that went pretty, had to get continued a number of times because of issues. And we're bumping up against those deadlines that are in state law where you don't have a choice anymore. If you get too far out, the applicant, it's by default, gets the permit. And so we want to avoid those, especially if we've got some really complicated things beginning to happen on West Street.
So, so as we go forward in this process, and I don't want to cut the conver, cut the conversation, but we do have other budgets that we do want to get to. And the process that we all are going to undertake is we've got some more budgets to look at this weekend, I believe, next week. And then hopefully after that, we're going to start putting, putting numbers together and see where we stand. And, and, you know, so, so that's where we are. And as we get closer to that, we will certainly bring you into the conversation so you can be part of it. And, you know, we welcome that, so you get to see what, what obstacles or what, what things we have in front of us. So it's hard to tell right now if we have money, but, you know, I mean, personally, I, I think this is a great idea. This is the third year you've, you've asked for it. We've made the improvements on West Street. You know, it, it seems, it seems to be well-merited, but now we just got to find money, so.
Okay, question, I mean, question, since this is, I think it's a great idea. It's not that much. Could APAB funds for one year be used to fund this?
For what funds?
Our future coming, could they, if the budget's that tight, could we divert some of those funds for some of these items?
We, we, yeah, I mean, I.
Yes, we can, if that's the route we want to take.
Personally, everything's on the table, but I would, I would assume the challenge we'll have is.
The following year.
Is the following year. So, so we want to try and find it within the budget if possible, but, but, yeah, it's maybe.
Probably if you're going to do something like that, you'd want to think it, think of it as like part of the master planning process. How long is that going to last? Because if you get somebody on board, you're probably going to want to have them on board through that entire process and not like leave after the first year. And then now you're, you know what I mean, that'd be weird. So.
I think if you're going to think about it, we have to think about it, at least in terms of that length of time, right?
And I would just add, and I know we've got to move on, but I, I think between what Bob has said and what Steph has said and what you guys are saying, I, I think that wrapping this position, which is necessary, into the master plan conversation and the Route 5 expansion conversation is, is what's going to drive this to be a successful addition to the budget.
And just to add, I mean, the, the list Stephanie gave was, that was really great, Stephanie. And some of those people I work with in my professional capacity, and some of them, and each town is a little bit different, but I'm, I'm thinking specifically of Walter Ramsey and Montague. I mean, they're very proactive about their planning. And so Walter is actually looking at, you know, parcels and things that might be eligible for different. Right, what, what businesses would work here? You know, what might be eligible for brownfields? I mean, Montague's a very different situation with, with some of the properties that they have that are vacant and available. But if that, if the position is, includes that, then it potentially just pays for itself.
But as, as you're saying also, if somebody wants to relocate their business here, and if they have to jump through all these hoops, they may say, well, we'll go to Deerfield. Whereas if they come here and they know what the process is and they can see somebody and say exactly, I mean, it may help pay for itself in the long term. That's, that's the way I see this as.
I would be curious though, in seeing some sample agreements of shared planners, just if, if anybody has anything like that that they can, how, how that works.
Yeah, I'll have a follow-up conversation with FERCOG and the Deerfield Planning Board just to check in on, on that and just to see if the FERCOG has, I know we're not a part of FERCOG, but, or maybe, maybe part of a planning commission to see if they have resources or something on that.
They're really, really helpful. Yeah, they'll be helpful.
We've done stuff with FERCOG in the past.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, yeah.
Well, thank you very much for bringing it forward.
Yeah, thank you.
And the rest of the budget just looks status quo, so.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next is DPW. A big stack of budgets here, Phil. Oh, sure.
Be careful.
Yeah, Phil.
Okay, so, thank you. And I've asked Eric and Garrett to come along with me tonight. We've had discussions since I've been out sick. I didn't know if I was going to be able to do any budget presentation or any explaining on my budget, so I asked them, so they're surely welcome to join me as we go through this.
So how do you want to take it? First thing I see is cemetery.
Level funded, it looks like.
Yes. Right?
That's a good start.
So far, we approve.
Well, other than being a cemetery.
We can go through all the level funded if you want first.
Well, yeah, I was just going to, yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so, go, go ahead, Darrell, go ahead. You just tell me.
Well, the next in my list is sewer.
Let's put that off, because we'll have a discussion there.
Yep. Vehicle lease. We can have that discussion.
Sure, absolutely.
So.
So the current lease is obviously level funded, but you had some, some items on the capital plan?
Yes, well, some, you know, some things have come up. I mean, we've had the discussion, I had a discussion with the finance chair about the lease. So next year, one of the leases is up. So we have to make a payment on that lease in 2023's budget, which is $31,000 and change.
Right, and then we'll be done?
And then that lease will be over.
Right.
So there's requests for the fire department, council on aging, police department, DPW, for vehicles for this fiscal year, if at all possible.
Right, and it's going to take a year for those vehicles to be made, is that correct?
That is correct. We are still waiting for one vehicle from 2020 that we have not had delivered yet.
Right.
So you're.
So, so by pushing.
Pushing the lease to next year, with only the amount of money that's available under that lease, which won't cover all the vehicles anyways.
Right.
You'll be out till 2024.
Right.
So my thoughts and discussions were to pay off the lease that's up for 2023, $31,000.
We could pay that $31,000 with, with free cash.
And to open a new lease in this year's budget.
Right.
For, say, if it's 50 and change, then you could take what's left in the $31,000 that would still be there and is funded and only add $20,000.
Right, because we won't know how many, if you start ordering vehicles, you don't know how many vehicles you'll actually get in '23 that we'll have to pay for. Is that correct?
That's correct. You don't, well, you pay the lease, but you will pay the lease upon delivery.
Right.
So if you take a lease for the $50,000 and change, if, once you get one vehicle, you're paying the lease.
You pay the whole thing.
Or you can advance pay, you can advance pay the lease, which we've been doing right along with the lease company.
With the lease company?
Right. Regardless if we receive the vehicle or not, we advance pay it that way. That way, we're on this rotation of the five years that's spread out.
So with the four vehicles.
Yes.
Is $50,000 enough for a payment?
Hold on, and I will tell you, I have it here somewhere.
Another lease coming up?
Don't we have one that's $19,000?
We have the ambulance lease that's separate. Yes. Right.
Paying for vehicles that we don't have.
I'm sorry. We're paying right now for vehicles we don't have, right?
I thought he says we don't pay until they're delivered.
You can take that option.
Oh, the first one.
I mean, we've always, so if we, so right now with the $31,000 lease.
Yeah.
That we pay, it's like $160,000 total.
Right.
For vehicle, for the value of the vehicles.
Right.
So with everybody that listed what they want and due to the uprising costs of all vehicles, if you take the $250,000, it's $22,038 more on top of the $31,000 and change.
So the four vehicles will be $250,000?
Correct.
And that would be?
Because I don't know if, I don't know if the prices changed. I talked to them the other day and they write on what their quote was, was price change. And that was from March till now, from February till now. So within a month, they've already had a price increase of 8%.
Can I just clarify one thing about this? So just, it's best not to think about this as a lease. It's really not a lease at all.
Yeah.
It's a loan.
Yeah.
We own the vehicles at the end.
Yes.
So, so even if we were advance paying.
We still own it.
We still own it at the end. It's not like we're paying for a year of a lease that we don't actually get the vehicle and then we return it later.
To own or lease to own.
Right, we're, yes, right, we're not, yeah.
Right, yes, I guess that's a better way to put it.
Yeah.
Because people have always asked, well, what do we do after the five years? So we have to turn that vehicle back in.
Yeah, we own it.
You own the vehicle.
So, but for $250,000 and we're only getting four vehicles, that means those vehicles are costing us $62,000 apiece?
There's some that are costing more. I mean, I mean, the COA van is over 70.
COA van, right. The COA van and then the police, and then the police cruiser.
That's 48 last time you quoted it, but who knows today what it is.
And then, and then the two pickups.
Correct, so.
And the school's paying for their van, right?
For whose vehicle?
The school. They're paying for their.
They're paying for their own vehicle, yes.
Right.
Through a lease, though.
Through a lease.
Yeah, it's through the same company.
Yeah.
I thought it was separate.
Overall, both leases are $214,000, plus the school pays $12,000 and change into what they, so it's $220,000, $226,000 or something like that, total.
So, so that will be a question for us going forward, whether we want to, whether we want to do this. I mean, I personally think we probably should, especially if the vehicles are going to be a year out, because if we wait a year.
And they're getting more expensive.
And they're getting, you know.
And it's a lot of vehicle for that amount of payment each year. But different than when we were on the board before and you used to have to find a way to fund these vehicles fully.
Correct.
Out of the, and which was, it was not only a heavy lift, it created.
I think the first vehicle you would get would be the police vehicle. And the only reason I'm saying that is because they mass produce them through, you know, through the state award, through MHQ. So that would probably be the first vehicle we would receive.
They all come off the state bid though, don't they?
Yeah, yeah, everything is under state.
The other, the other possibility, if we wanted to not change, if we wanted to not change the amount theoretically, right, we could, we could pay the $31,000 off, so then that would eliminate that. And then we could buy one of these vehicles for cash and reduce the amount of this thing theoretically by $20,000 to get back down to that $30,000. And then we would just be going forward as we did in prior years with no.
I guess the priority in my eyes is that something has to be done this budget season. Because like you say, the cost of the vehicles is going to up, the availability of vehicles is outrageously slow. I mean, that's a decision through the finance.
But just, you wouldn't have to worry about the $20,000 now.
Right, if we did a, if we did a vehicle, just leased three and then we bought one, say we decided to buy the.
We have resources to do that.
Bought the police, you know, say $50,000 for the police cruiser, then, you know, then, then we're down to a 200, 200,000 lease, right?
That's actually a good idea, Sean, because it's just much more manageable from a bottom-line standpoint.
That's kind of where we already are, right?
It's where we are. And that was kind of the point of the lease, right? To always sort of stay in the same ballpark.
Right.
And given that we have two options of two funding sources, that would be possible for taking one of those vehicles out of the lease.
Yeah.
Okay.
Would that impact anything else?
David, I'm sorry.
You get a lot of goodwill if you get the council on aging van ahead of time, and, because they've been asking for that forever. And getting that prior to, we have it out next year, or the original plan, but if you get it quicker, they're going to be a lot happier, and you're going to... Action of folks in town would be like, yes.
Yeah, well, it would be moved up a year.
That might be the one to remove anyway, to keep that payment down in the range we want.
Right. But instead of taking out of free cash, if you did that, you'd take the 70 plus the 31, is that what I'm hearing? To pay the lease off?
Well, I was thinking that you might take the police cruiser at 48, and the 31 would be 80,000, pay that off out of free cash, or whatever, ARPA, free cash combination you want to come up with, or whatever.
And then start a new...
And then start a new lease at 200,000, or roughly, that would put you, that would put you back down around the $31,000 again, you know what I mean? So, you wouldn't have to, so you'd just be continuing the same payment forward through the next five years.
So...
Yes, but do both.
Yeah, so you would have to pay the lease off to get it, so you could get vehicles this coming.
Correct, yes, do both.
So, 200,000 is 42,000.
Right.
$700, if, if you took one of them off.
Yep.
So, you would still have to increase the budget.
Unless you took one of the larger vehicles, unless you paid prepaid one of the larger vehicles. Paid upfront for one of the larger vehicles.
At some point, though, how, how, I was going to ask, is how does this impact the loan, essentially, in terms of how much you're borrowing? Is there a point at which they just don't want to bother with it?
Under 100,000. They will not, they wouldn't not finance anything under 100,000.
Okay, well...
So, then you just decide which vehicle comes out to keep you down at that payment amount.
We'll work on this, we got kind of a general plan
Yeah.
going forward, and we'll...
I mean, we have some different options, where we could put the cost of the vehicles, we could group them together to see what comes out closer.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, if we can get it so it more closely matches that $31,000, let's, let's see, but, but we got some time to figure that out, so, okay.
Are we going to keep going through the level funded ones?
So, tree warden is what I have next. Looks, looks level funded to me.
That's correct.
We have, okay. Then I've got transfer station. That's level funded. Right? And just for...
I mean, money's moved around a little bit, but ultimately, it's level funded in lines.
I don't know, we worked with the accountant this year to try to get the line item straightened out, because...
But it's still $89,437, and, and, and just remind me, we're, we're getting a new compactor, and is that ARPA, or have, we haven't figured that out yet?
Haven't figured it out.
Okay, so, that, that we have to figure out.
It's $80,000.
How about our recycling? Is that going to come back and bite us anymore, or are we...
Actually, actually, we are getting money back.
Okay, I mean, I know, a year or two ago, it was like...
The market's changed, so...
Yeah, we saw increases.
Yeah, so like, I think we're getting...
Now it's worth something.
While we...
Now it's worth something, okay. Who puts those extra plastic bottles in there?
Okay, here's one that I don't understand.
Okay, go on.
Townwide fuel.
I was going to ask that.
Well, don't forget when this was developed.
I understand.
Probably going to see that increase.
I would, I would suggest maybe...
Well, actually, actually, we're going out, I mean, the...
It's Friday.
It's Friday, yeah, so Friday...
Who do we, we used to do that through the cog. Who do we...
We still do it through the cog. So, they're asking for, you know, how many gallons each town is
Yeah.
requiring. So, we should have a number shortly as to what a gallon's going to cost, hopefully.
Okay.
And that bid locks you in?
Yes, we're going with fixed rates, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, there's a lot of talk about that prior.
Yeah.
Probably would look pretty, probably would look pretty good to be on a fixed rate right now, wouldn't it?
Yep.
But, you know, if we lock it at the higher price, and then it drops, you know, then you're the bad guy again.
Right.
What are you going to do? You know, it's fair, it's better than going to bear...
If you can predict fuel prices going forward in the next five years, you just let me know, we'll go find something else to do. We'll have nothing to do with any of this, yeah.
So, you'll get us a new number on that one?
We hope so.
Yeah.
As long as they, sometimes they'll send out, you know, what they, or you can call, they will call, or no, sometimes they send out what they predict.
Yeah, we, we should just have an idea, you know, because we all know what fuels. All right, public works is what I've got next. I don't even know what public works.
We have administration.
Administration, 3751, that looks like it's level. Motor pool has got a little increase.
Little increase.
That's, what's your increase?
$500 in supplies and parts, I mean, that seems reasonable.
Parts.
Yep.
And I would, and I would venture...
One part.
And I would ask again, only $500?
Again, you know, we developed this budget a little early, and
Right.
you know, who knows?
I don't know what you guys...
If you do the vehicle lease, though, we might not...
I've just, that's...
Yeah, so...
Save on maintenance with new vehicles.
There's still an awful lot of, awful lot of things that need to get fixed, and, you know, I, we just want to be sure, because...
You know, there's some extra vehicles now that weren't in the fleet, and, you know, you have to get them inspected, you know.
They got to be inspected, got to be fixed, so...
Sometimes, you know, $35 adds up, you know.
Maybe he figures he doesn't need more, because he won't be able to get parts anyway.
Yeah.
All right, well, it's, it's just, you know, it's, in, in my travels, that's, you know, what I personally see is parts are going up pretty high, and was just part of a committee working on some hauling rates, and that's what some of the haulers are saying, is parts are going, you know, hard to get, and they're going up, so... Okay, next, I've got highway. Looks like we've got...
So, we have to have a discussion about highway, so...
Can we go through the ones that are level funded, though, and get through all of those streetlights?
We'll go, we'll go back, I got...
And snow and ice. Streetlights are $11,000 still, snow and ice, that's our usual thing.
Unless our friends at Eversource jump the price.
Yeah.
Facilities, ma, no, we don't, we're going to go back and talk about that, the snow and ice.
I think we're out of our, we're out of our level funded, I think, Phil.
Where, 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 where are we at with snow? What did we spend on snow and ice this year? I'm sure you're still working on things, but where's our number now?
Still processing invoices for snow and ice, yeah, I thought...
There's a few out there lingering.
I was going to follow up, I said you were.
Night, too, so...
Yeah.
I don't know, the last time I looked, it was like $84,000 deficit.
Okay.
The last time I looked at it.
Right.
Well, when the deficit was declared, that was, what, almost a month ago, maybe, so...
Too long ago, I mean, it was pretty far into the season.
Over and above the 50?
Over and above.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I mean, and that's generally what happens every year.
Yep.
Okay.
So, I guess my question is, is you're going to leave that level funded, the snow and ice? Because I know we've increased it every year, just because...
I actually did plug, what did I do? I added $100.
Yeah, it's perfect.
We should, we...
That should cover it.
We should increase it a little.
Yeah, you're supposed to.
Go wild.
I just hit it with $100.
Okay, so, let's go, now we go backwards, and I've got facilities maintenance in front of me. That looks like quite a substantial...
Yeah, and actually, we may need to increase that even more. Phil and I talked about this, and actually, we were just notified by the accountant the end of last week that it's, that budget is in deficit. But Phil, it's just, it's the fire pump, that's...
I mean, there's some costs, now there's some costs.
What's the fire pump?
So, just, just think about the electricity costs. So, now we're running three mini splits downstairs in the COA, under the electric to heat it, because that's their source of heat. So, that, the fire pump is $250 plus a month for to exercise.
That was for the fire suppression?
For this building.
It was installed?
What's the fire pump?
This is this building.
For the fire suppression, yeah.
So, it runs all the time?
Tests itself.
Tests itself, it has to run.
Monthly.
That's become a very expensive unit.
$250?
Every month.
It's a 480-volt three-phase system with a separate service
Yeah.
for the fire pump.
You can, you can go out there and watch it spin.
All right.
Yeah.
You can get your $250 bucks a month worth out of it.
Phil, does that get inspected?
Maybe we should put some solar panels on the roof, this stuff you're painting.
Now you're talking.
Does the fire pump ever get inspected?
Once a year.
Yeah, it's an annual inspection.
Just to make sure it's working.
Okay.
We have had some unforeseen expenses this year that, you know, I think that have caused the budget to go into deficit, but it's the fire pump.
Fire pump, the heat, the heat in the building when we had the leak, the pipes that were broke.
Is this facilities maintenance that I'm looking at just this building, or is it including other buildings?
Oh, this includes utilities for other buildings.
Yeah.
And I'm sorry, Phil, go ahead, it's your budget.
No, that's, that's correct.
So, so, Marlene, you said you don't think $120 is, or almost $121,000 is enough? You think it should be higher?
I do, I think it'd be reasonable to increase that, and, and I don't know what number, so I'd like to...
And the only reason I'm saying that is because of the cost in electric, gas.
Yeah, I think we need to dig a little deeper and, and see what's really, well, I know it's the fire pump, but let's look and see if there are other costs that have increased, and then we can come up with a reasonable...
I mean, we had, well, elevator, you know, the elevator's up and running now, you have to have an annual inspection every year.
So, that's charged to the budget.
We had problems with the elevator, was, I mean, we spent almost $12,000 between inspections, repairs, and other things with the...
That I don't think we were...
Last year, this year, so...
Why does this say vehicle leases in, under town buildings rentals and leases?
Where's that?
That's for what we're paying to store the artifacts.
I see that over under the comments, but under line 5270, Marlene.
It does say copies, vehicle leases, et cetera.
Vehicle leases shouldn't be in there.
It should be leases, right, the copier, probably.
Like the copier lease?
Oh, oh, yeah.
Oh, so, let's...
So, vehicle leases should...
Building space.
That's just a category in, in the facilities budget.
Yeah, I mean, large equipment leases.
These vehicle leases, yeah.
So, what do you want to push this number to, or do you want to get back to us?
I, Phil, it's up to you.
For...
I mean, we can keep this number for now.
I would keep this, I would keep that 120 down, we'll, you know, you know, I'll go into Vader and see exactly what we spent in electric costs and gas costs.
I just don't, well, I suppose we, you know, we underestimate, and then we will just have to see the finance committee during the year, but I think it's, it's, I think we should have a reasonable number in there.
But at some point, isn't Smith Academy's solar supposed to go online?
Yeah.
They're still waiting for a meter.
They're waiting for a meter, a technician to go out and turn the meter on.
Good luck working with Mr. Eversource.
That's the whole...
Eversource seems to be the whole...
Yep.
Really turn the solar panels on?
I, um...
No.
I have a contact there
Yeah.
that I can reach out.
Yeah, no, and, you know, to be, to be fair, they have a lot of projects.
You've reached out to him, Diane, yeah.
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 My streetlights burnt out, you know, remember when we cut all the streetlights? So, I have two, one on each side when we had Bailey and the Wonder Dog.
Yeah.
Both burnt out in the last week, they were there the next day on each of them. Material for public utilities, man.
There we go.
Wow.
Okay, so now...
Public shout out, shout out.
So, we're okay with facilities? I was going to move on to highway.
Yeah, what did he tell us, though? You're right, I did reach out to him.
I don't really remember.
I don't remember, I'll call him again.
I know, at home, we're waiting, we're waiting for a project, and they have to do some things, and what they told us is we're in the queue.
That's what I think we were told.
But it's, there are a lot of projects in the queue, so...
Phil, isn't that what we were told, we're in the queue?
We're in the, yeah, I'm pretty sure that's what it is.
Yeah, because that's what we were told, too.
It sounds like our truck delivery, we're in the queue.
Yeah.
We're in the queue.
Okay, so highway has got an increase. Looks like a budget increase, well, go ahead, Phil.
I don't have that paper.
Or Garrett, or whoever's talking about this one.
So, as you can see under highway, what we're trying to do is hire a person. So, right now, just step back a few years, right now, we have a half-time, full-time employee being paid at a highway who is also being paid half the salary out of water. So, I'm looking to move that position strictly to water, because we've had comments from either DEP, EPA, our consulting group, that...
We've never, we've never had enough people there.
Because the staffing requirements up there are two, two full-time employees at the water plant, two and a half employees at the wastewater plant, that's their recommendations. So, right now, we have two full-time employees at the wastewater, one and a half at the water. So, I'm looking to take that half salary, keep it in the DPW, and add the other half salary into it for the $27,000 and change to hire a full-time employee at the DPW, and shift the half a salary that's now in the DPW up to the water and pay for it out of the underpriced fund.
So, you would have a new person...
One new employee at the DPW, and that half-time person goes full-time at the water.
Essentially, become one full-time person at water, because they're half-time there now.
Yeah, and, and, and so... So, what do we, what do we end up paying this, what do you estimate we're, we're paying the new person?
The new person will start at the starting salary under the union contract at about $55,000. So, that's why we're asking for half the salary.
And you're asking for the other half in the water budget?
The other half in the water, which would, which would be paid for, yeah, we meant...
So, this half would stay here and be supplemented?
Right, correct, and then the water would be paid out of the water.
So, each would go up about half?
So, just talk to me if this doesn't happen.
Go ahead. What's that?
Talk to me about what happens if, what are, if, if for whatever reason we can't find the money, or whatever, if this doesn't happen, what kind of an effect? I mean, are we in big trouble with DEP? How does it, how does it affect, um...
You know, it would go in their report, it would go in their report that, you know, again, we're, because this has been going on for a few years now.
Right, right.
And they come out yearly for their inspections.
Yeah.
They can put that in the report, they can actually force you to get that extra person. I mean, they're kind of like the gorilla in the room, so to speak, so...
Yeah, and, and I guess I'm, I'm also curious about how this affects stuff on the highway. Are we, are we short, are we short-staffed there, anyway? Is my understanding... So, Garrett, do you want to talk to, talk to that? Are we, because I know at one point last year, because of the way vacations went, it was like nobody, right?
Still the same.
Still the same, it's worse.
It's worse.
It's worse, I mean, you know, I mean...
Yeah, and those vacations are taken during the busy season, right?
Well, you have the two employees with a lot of longevity, I mean, they get a lot of time off. of time off.
Yeah. No, no, and I'm not, I'm not berating any of that. I'm just trying to, you know, you know, get the other side of this.
You know, and we, we as a team sit here and we listen to other public safety departments say the town's growing, the town has more needs. We're in the same boat. You know, we're in the same boat. I mean, we heard about a pickleball court tonight. We've heard about other activities going on in the park. That means more maintenance, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
And, I mean, the reality is there's been times when you've been staffed at higher levels, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah. So.
Yeah, I mean, you know, the town.
Yeah. I remember how many people worked when I was growing. Ed and I remember when we were growing up here. There were a lot of people though. So, so anyway, so yeah, no, and I don't, and, and I'm just, I just raised that cuz it's, it's good information as we go forward.
And we figured that was the best way to approach this, is to take only, really to supplement half a salary and put the other half up there that, obviously with the increase in the water fees and the enterprise fund fees that there should be enough of, of income to take it, to take care of that.
Absolutely.
I mean, because, you know, years prior to this, they paid two-thirds of my salary out of that.
Yes. Now your salary, does it, is it still split or we take it?
No, there's no split.
There's no split.
I, I think it's important also that we're, the position isn't just to fulfill a position that DEP might be asking us for, or to fulfill a position that we need.
Yes.
Right? I mean, that, that's the, that's really the bottom line, right?
I mean, no, that was a piece of it, but that wasn't the biggest piece of it. The biggest piece of it is that the highway department needs another body, period.
Right.
Period.
How many people are there now, Phil?
I don't know.
Do we know? At the highway, just at the highway.
Yes, just, yeah, just.
So we have the highway superintendent, we have two equipment operators and a mechanic. That's it.
That's a lot smaller than it was, Daryl, even when you and I were on the board.
Yes, it was. Yes, it is. Yeah.
Yeah. Thinking about the vacation thing and obviously you can't really have people go on vacation in the winter cuz.
That's correct.
But they do. And same with this, they're just as busy in the summer, Sean, and they're going.
Yeah.
Then you're literally having times where there's no.
It's very hard to plan a project. It's come to that point.
Okay. No, that, that's good. And, and that's, I think it's important for townspeople to hear that and, you know, I mean, it's.
And one of the other increases in that budget is line painting throughout town. We used to be able, Garrett can speak on it.
They don't cover, the only way they do line painting now covered through chapter 90 is new projects. So if you want to pave roads, you'll pay for it as part of the project. If I want to go out and paint random roads in town, they don't, they don't cover that anymore.
And, and just out of curiosity, cuz you brought it up, what are the plans for chapter 90 money in 23?
What, specific projects?
Yeah.
Road surfacing, resurfacing?
Like what roads? That's what I'm looking for.
Um, well, Chestnut Street from Main Street to Route 5, we have to do something with that. Part Prospect Street from Elm to the four-way stop at Chestnut, gotta do something there. Um, we're gonna fix up Straits Road, the dirt section, make it so it's not, I know that.
A washboard. Don't fix it, but that's okay.
I mean, well, there has to be some corrections in it.
Oh, yeah. No, no, it's.
People speed down that road, which creates half the problem.
Well, yeah, and then the problem for those of us farming it, when, when you do farm it, it is unbelievably rough and terrible on equipment, so.
Not paving, just to, uh, bring it up to the standard.
Yep.
I mean, I live on that road and we never go that direction.
Yeah.
Out of town. We would never, ever travel that road. Ever.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's rough. I, I get it. So, no, and thank you. I, I just bring it up because, you know.
Yeah, it's heavy dirt. Elm Street's gotta get done too. So we have a plan in works for Elm, for Elm Street. It's just gonna cost a little more, so I'm gonna save a little extra this year and put it towards the full fund for next year.
Right.
Because we're gonna have to resurface Elm Street. It's not, you know, the gas company came through and did all their services, so they.
Right.
Did those in the roads. I mean, truck traffic kills them, kills it.
Yeah.
So we're, we got a plan in works for it.
Okay. Great. Thank, thank you. All right, I've got water in front of me.
So as.
Can I, can we just backtrack to highway? What is $3,000 for outside contracting?
It's for when we have to hire somebody. I mean, we, we never had a line item for that. We used, you know, it used to be like in a generic column, I guess, or it was included in something else.
Contractor, like a road thing, okay.
And can I just ask, you're adding $10,000 for an administrative assistant?
Yes, this is a, been a discussion we've had for years and years and years, I guess. So we've asked, I've asked the building inspector whether he did or not, I don't know, cuz I was out to partner with him to hire a person to share as administrative assistant.
He didn't make the request.
He didn't make the request.
Oh, you, you, oh, with the, with the who? The building inspector?
With the building, yeah. He didn't.
And so what would, what would the administ, what would, what would your portion, what would they be doing?
My portion would be all the billing, all the phone calls, because as you, you know, you have to understand that. There's nobody sitting in an office taking phone calls in the Department of Public Works usually on a daily basis. So a call comes in, it goes to the secretary's office. The secretary's office, let's say it's a water, something with water. The secretary's office calls the water superintendent who's doing work out on Route 5 or something, and he doesn't get back to the person.
Right.
You know what I'm saying?
But so you're, so as a DPW director, I mean, you're not a working superintendent, so you're not, aren't you in the office?
Right, I am in the office or checking projects. I mean, we're, I don't sit in the office all day to, to say. Plus, we could take some, a load off of transfer station stickers, requests. People call, people call our cell phones all the time just to ask, where can I get a, where can I get a form to?
Like a baitment or whatever.
An abatement form, a form to hook into the sewer, which an administrative assistant could answer that.
Yeah, and you could just forward them to Gerard.
I know, I was gonna say. I mean, we have a setup in the town to.
Well, it's our second largest department and they've never had administrative assistant for billing or doing any of the follow-ups. Same with Kyle, right? I mean, Kyle's been trying to get something to go with his reporting of, of the different meetings that he has and that he attends with the planning board and other departments. So, I mean, I.
Administrative staff is, is, assistant is providing some support for the building inspector and DPW.
And everybody else that calls, that, that calls in.
But I, I understand what Phil is saying is that having somebody there to, at the, at the highway garage to answer phones. I get that.
So you, they would be at the highway garage?
They would be somewhere. We'd find a space for them.
Well, if it ends up being a shared, yeah, you'd have to figure, if it ends up being a shared position.
Yeah, I mean, if a shared person could be here, you know, the person could be here to, well, how many hours a week, you know, and I mean, I don't know what Kyle would need. I mean, he has shared with me that he needs somebody for filing to answer, like I said, someone calls.
Right, all the permits.
And the admin assistant is doing the filing for him now.
It's, you know, I mean, he's, says he's wasting time doing it himself, I guess, to say the least.
Well.
Okay.
Well, it could be that the roles and responsibilities need to be ironed out with the staff we have now. If, if, if another, if, if an admin isn't, you know what I mean? Because there's certainly, I would say there certainly seems to be that two, two department heads are, are asking for a position.
No, only one department head is asked.
Well, well, no, Kyle has mentioned it to me, but it wasn't in his.
It wasn't in his budget.
So.
Yeah, and, yeah. Yeah, so, and, and may be a need and we'll, we'll look at it going forward and this is not the first year you've asked for it, and so I recognize that. And so, anyway, water. Looks like there's an increase in water.
So as we did last year with the sewer, we looked at the hard numbers. So fortunately, having been through it, Mr. Eric Meals here, and I worked pretty diligently with the water superintendent as well to prepare this budget instead of having it be a guessing game, I guess, to say the least. So I mean, Eric and Shirley, if you want, I mean.
I sat down with Tony over, I got it. I sat down with Tony over there. He asked me to help him out just because he knows that I split up my budget and made it more usable, as in like more line items, so I know where the money's going. It worked really well for me. I mean, just real quick, just, just so far this year, we have like a quarter left. I have somewhere in the neighborhood of 38 to 41% of my budget left, so I'm actually gonna be within budget this year. So he asked me to help him out, splitting his, splitting his line items up, cuz he's never had it, so like in-depth. So obviously the, the big number is the first one, but that's what Phil had already talked about with putting the other half of the guy on there. These numbers that I, we have appropriated for the 22 budget was he, he never submitted a list to Lori to break his up as much as like mine is in some of the other budgets. So we just kinda put them kinda where they, you know, kinda where they landed. So if it's a big increase, it may not be that big of an increase. It was just all lumped into one budget line item before.
Well, but, yeah, like electricity went from 12,821 to 37,000.
His two budgets in 21 and 22 were crazy. They literally went down almost 100,000 and then now when we do it again, basically if you look at your budgets from 21 to 23, those two budgets are pretty close.
Yeah, except for the like, the electricity.
I have no idea.
It was maybe not an accurate budget.
Yeah, so the electricity is up to $40,000 and, and that makes sense.
Mine's almost 70,000, so that, that's probably a pretty good number, so.
Oh, yeah. No, and so long as you, you guys are okay with the numbers, I mean, I'm, you know, that's.
And just like with mine, this is the first year of it. You put the numbers in there, go through the year, do really good accounting with each line item. Next year, we'll probably be able to nail it down a little better and closer.
Okay.
So.
What is the, oh, yeah, and then he's got, well, and like this 50,000 for water breaks and emergency repairs. It looks like he never had that.
No, we never had it before and that always ended up being coming out of free cash, like 100 grand here or whatever at the end of the year. So we talked about it, make a line out of 50,000. If we don't use it for water breaks, save it in the enterprise fund for next year's water breaks, you know, cuz some years it goes way up and there's other years where there's none at all or just one minor one.
How, how does that work in enterprise? Marlene and Phil, help me, like, so if we don't spend the money, does it stay in enterprise or does it?
Water.
It closes out and then it goes, it gets certified by DOR at the end of the year when.
But it doesn't get, it doesn't get go to free cash.
It goes to retained earnings.
Retained earnings.
Okay.
So which could be used further on down the line for that. Yeah, so that was the big, cuz that's his big one. It always, it always kills it at the end of the year, like he told me.
And we've been trying to build up our retainer.
Absolutely.
There's always one or two breaks.
And it's a good way. I mean, it's a great way to do it. I've worked with enterprise funds before where you allocate 10 grand a year in, just for an emergency. And if you don't use it, so every year, no matter what happens, you're putting $10,000 in the, into the retained earnings every year. And it, it really helps out.
If you want to use retained earnings, you have to vote.
Oh, yeah.
You have to go to town floor.
Right, yeah. But it's there, so it's not.
Like free cash, you know.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, it's better than going to town meeting and asking for $47,000 like we had to that time because there was nothing in retained earnings.
Right. Oh, yeah, well, how many years have we had a water main break on Route 5 that cost us 100,000 or something?
Well, last year, last year killed you guys at the end. You used a ton of free cash on water and sewer to get them both to close last year, so.
So our, you know, that's, this is the expense side. Will we, in earning, you know, I hate to say, are we charging enough? Cuz I think we are as a water user, but, but, but are, are, are we gonna be okay?
I would say yes, because now that we have a system where, you know, where we're going to increase the water and sewer rates unfortunately, according to our plan.
I thought, I'm just, don't mean to interrupt you, but I thought with that, we did it six months, we were six months behind raising the rates this year. Like, we should have done it in the fall. We ended up doing it.
Right.
Because we missed out because of billing and all that.
That's right. We aren't able to get a full year.
When I was wondering if, are we gonna do it like with town meeting, voted with town meeting or shortly thereafter it goes into effect for the fall billing cycle to go up for fiscal year 23? Cuz we only got one billing or like, you get two billings every year. We only really raised the rates for one of the billing cycles, so we're already six months behind.
And how does that work? Did we miss it because we didn't?
I don't think it was anybody's fault. We were just in the process of doing it. And I think that whenever we brought it up, it ended up being too late because they had just put in the bills and Sharon had to get them out and it was all just.
Yeah, but timing was wrong.
The timing was bad.
You have to give, exactly. And you have to give sufficient notice.
Absolutely. And that, that was partially, I didn't, I wasn't sure, but now.
But we're on track now.
But we have a plan going forward now that we've got rates kinda, I'm not gonna say exactly where they need to be, but don't, every year, aren't we adding two, two and a half percent every year kinda automatically?
It's 5%, I believe.
We've been adding more than that.
We started, we started 5% this year.
Well, you started at two and a half.
Years ago.
Years ago.
With DPC, whenever they did the whole thing, we raised it 20%. From moving on from that, the paperwork and everything else, and he reiterated that just in raising it this last time, 5% should be the number moving forward unless, you know, if something crazy happens and prices drop and, but he said, that's what, that's my understanding with him. Now I can have, I mean, I'm sure he'll be back to talk on projects and stuff. We can always ask him and get a more extensive plan, but that was my understanding moving forward.
That sounds right because we were always, our increases were never keeping up with the reality of what the expenses were. So that's why that one year really shot up and then it was kind of to maintain operational expenses.
There were a number of years we didn't raise them at all.
Right.
Like 10 of them.
It was corrective.
Yeah.
Right, right.
So.
Yeah, and, and, and we do want the water, you know, it'd be nice if the water pays for some of the, you know, not only the employees and the workers.
Be as self-sufficient as possible.
But some of the, some of the, some of our loans and stuff like that should really be paid out of that and not be paid out of the town budget, so.
I know my goal and Tony's was to get it where we are self-sufficient.
Yeah.
And we're not coming back for free cash and we're not coming back, you know, we find this money. We need this, we need that.
Yeah, yeah.
I know it'll take some years, but.
Oh, yeah.
We're on the way. And this is the first step in getting some kind of budget going for him, so.
Okay, well, that's good. Thank you for doing that with Tony.
Absolutely.
Because, cuz I like seeing all this, cuz you can see all the lines and it gives you a clear idea of how we're actually spending our money.
And as like Eric said, like this year he'll know exactly because he has a year into what he did last year. So he'll know if he has to change a line item or something to increase or decrease or however it may shake out. But you've never had that before. We've never had that, the actual budget numbers.
Right, right. Well, I'm glad we got it now.
Yeah, thanks.
So.
It's not just on our side. It was, you know, through the accounting firm and everybody else's. We can pinpoint where things are being spent out of the zone.
Yeah, yeah, well.
It was.
We had some years where you could have asked the question, but we couldn't have gotten any answer.
Lori's great. She's worked with us a ton, getting everything itemized the way we wanted it, so.
So next is sewer department. It's you, Eric.
Can I just interrupt before we get into the sewer discussion? I just want to say that, was it Monday, yesterday, Diane and I met at the wastewater plant and Eric gave us a really great tour. You all should think about going with Eric and, and looking at that. It was really informative. And I think townspeople should see it cuz, I mean, I don't ever think about the sewer plant. Sorry, Eric, but.
You can come down anytime. My house is always open.
It was really, you know, great. And we're, we're talking about maybe doing a little videotape tour so that townspeople can see the plant because it, it was, it was really, I, I was, it was really fascinating to see.
It's pretty eye-opening when you go down there. Then you can come in here and when you hear what we're talking about, you know, moving forward for not just the upgrade project but for anything, then you have an idea of what, what we're talking about and it's not just.
Oh, that tape might be good for town meeting.
Well, and we were thinking of getting it put online so they can watch it online on YouTube.
So that people can see what happens down there, the condition of the plant, the age of the plant, how things really work. It was, it was really fascinating. I think it'd be interesting, and, you know, most people aren't going to have an opportunity to go down there. So if we could do something like that. So Eric and I will work with John on something like that. But I would encourage everybody sitting at this table to try to go see it in person.
I guess I'll take the Cub Scouts.
Your own water.
It's not, yeah, it's, it's, it's not, parts of it are most unpleasant, but.
We went through those ones fast.
He talks very fast in the stinky rooms. So I just want to thank you for that. And it was really interesting to see. I had to admit, I was embarrassed. I'd never been down there.
And you laugh about the Cub Scouts. We, whenever I was in Northfield, we used to have the after-school environmental program, used to come down, and I'd give them a tour of the wastewater plant. So anybody, I mean, as long as you book it and we have time.
No, it's good for kids to see, you know.
It's a good understanding from how you make the river clean, so.
Yeah, it really, really was, was interesting. And I thank Diane for meeting me down there. I think we both really enjoyed it. Some parts more than others, but.
It's the reality of what happens.
It is. So I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, but I did want to put that out there.
I mean, it, you know, it shows you from the flush to the finished product. I mean, you know, really. It's a system within, you know.
The sewer budget. It went up just a little bit. Everything's pretty self-explanatory on the right-hand column. I don't, I am not really sure what happened with heating oil in my budget last year. I'm going to speak with Lori, like, after town meeting and the budgets get approved. I want to make sure I get a budget back that says, here's your stuff. I didn't realize that I didn't have heating oil in there. I'm coming in under budget enough to be able to pay for my heating oil this year, because I didn't, I didn't overhaul a couple pumps in the, in the knowing that we may be going to an upgrade. So that money will be able to be used for that. I'm not going to need that. But I'm putting it back into the budget. So that's the 11,400. I mean, the 5290, the dumpster fees have gone up. That's just, I mean, regular laboratory testing and assessments. We went from National Pollution Discharge Permit. April 1st, we start what's called a MAGG permit. It's actually for the smaller sewer, sewer systems around here. It's basically a general permit. But all permities in Massachusetts from DEP are getting PFAS sampling. Everybody's going to have to do it in a lot of it, which is Palmer's, oils, greases, all that stuff that's in your wastewater. We're going to have to sample our sludge for it, our Influent, our Effluent. It's quite expensive, but, so we're just preparing for that, so.
Scary stuff.
Yeah, I'm hoping, and it might be able to put off for a year. If they don't make a decision on what the actual sampling protocol is by July 1st, then we won't have to do it till fiscal year '24. So we'll wait, have to wait and see with that, though, so. Sludge disposal obviously has gone up. That's just trucking fees. The actual disposal fees themselves. We're right on track. We do right around 30 or so, 35 loads a year. We usually clean out one of our tanks. We go back and forth, cleaning out a tank every year, which is like five or six extra loads.
Where's the sludge go?
Right now, it goes to Lowell. They haul it, I mean, the Lowell trucking comes from out east. They're actually out in Ludlow, I believe. They come in, take it down to Lowell. So we, I mean, it's almost 2 grand a load, so it's.
But what do they do? Is that landfilled, or do they?
No, they process it. They have, yeah, they have, they have different systems down there to do that. And then telecommunications. Used to be, like, I don't, I use my own cellphone, but Ken has a town-issued cellphone. It used to be under, or it stills under the contract with the DPW cellphones and all that. But Phil's going to start breaking it up, so I'll pay for Ken's out of the sewer budget. So that's the only little bit extra there, so. I mean, other than that, everything else stays the same. So it's pretty cut and dry. Like I said, we're right on budget this year, so I'm pretty happy with what's going on.
So you did something right, right?
I don't know yet. Not there yet, so we keep our fingers crossed for three months, so.
Do you guys, in these budgets you've presented tonight, be able to absorb the new Route 5 sewer project when everything's up and running, the station, the electricity for it, all those, I mean, it's.
Yeah, it may be.
It's only going to be a half a year probably anyways.
Maybe tight the first year or the first, you know, six months.
Till we figure out what it all is going to cost.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, it really only be, it's another station. I don't think, it's not going to run that much because there's not a lot of flow on it, so. I mean, it's probably only maybe $100 a month more, $200 a month more for electricity. It's not going to be much at all, so.
And along those lines, I think what's important that a lot of people don't realize, since we are talking about it a little bit, is the pump station, like near my home, and all of them in town, including what will be the new pump station down on Route 5, those are constantly monitored, right? I mean, physically, like daily?
We have.
Every other day?
The more, the stations that run more, like the one by your house, Maple, the one of the main stations, we have like four stations that get monitored every single day of the week.
Do we mean in-person monitor?
Yes, we go there, we take readings there, we bring them back, we put readings in the computer to send to, for operating reports. With that one going online first, like, you know, once it goes online, we'll probably do that one every day till we get comfortable with it. But being a lower-flow one, it'll probably be every other day.
But there's always the remote alarming type.
Absolutely.
Yeah. I guess I just want people to understand, because we really haven't had this conversation through this whole project, I don't think, that, that part of, part of having a new pump or house, or the old pump house or station, is that we physically have a person that goes there every day or every two days, but they're all alarmed. And they all, you know what I mean? There's.
We have an auto dialer that has all the alarms. If pumps don't work, if pumps get clogged, if there's high levels, low levels, they all go to this alarm station and it calls us automatically if any, any alarm system happens.
And of course, the new one will be state-of-the-art, so it's going to have the most updated technology probably for.
It's going to have the same technology as the other one, so they're all the same. Like, I went through great pains to get them all the same.
Oh, it'll all be brand-new, yeah, so. I just think that's important, that people understand, because I, you know, I see a truck every day near my house, and I just wanted to make sure people understood that all of the.
Maple's the one we want to keep running.
All of the, yeah, yeah. That they're visited regularly to make, get eyes on them.
I go on the computer and monitor some of them. We have computer being able to make sure they're running right, make sure they're checking in with their cell towers, things like that. We only have five stations that actually use telephone lines. The rest of them are all cell towers and stuff, so Wi-Fi.
Great. Thank you for clarification.
So as you heard, we've got a few more budgets to go through, and probably two weeks we'll start putting this on. It's, I know it's being put on the spreadsheet, but we'll have a better idea of where we're going to land. And as we get close to that, we'll certainly bring you all into the discussion as to how we figure out how we pay for anything. So thank you. Thanks for all you do for Hatfield. We appreciate it.
Yes, thank you very much.
Yep, thank you, guys. Phil, you might want to have a conversation with Kyle.
There were questions that were, that came up last week regarding DPW capital projects. While Phil's here, did you want to touch base with him about those?
Phil, sit in a chair where you can get comfortable.
I'm sorry.
I knew that there were questions of finance that we have.
Okay, so, so under DPW, we've got Compactor. We're going to either fund that through ARPA or Free Cash. That's 80,000. We already talked about the lease program. I don't think we need to talk about that.
Yeah, that was one of them.
I think that was one of the questions.
That was one of them, yeah.
From last week, I mean.
From last week. Raymond Ave, I, yeah, it's either ARPA or Free Cash.
There was one of the streets.
Flashing pedestrian signals.
Yeah, you want to know the locations of those.
Yep.
Okay, so we can discuss that. So I put in the budget for two crosswalks to have the flashing pedestrian signals, like the ones that are out here at the project across the street. One location would be on North, North Street, Main Street, and the other location would be by Smith Academy. Those are the two. But I've applied for a grant under shared streets for four. So we're awaiting the word for, for four crossings, so two additional ones to pay. So I, I applied for the grant for all four locations. So I'll just tell you that four locations are those two. Main Street here by the store, and the other one down by the 55 and Overhausen.
Oh, on Elm Street.
On Elm Street, correct.
Okay.
So we're waiting to hear our grant application.
So then you wouldn't need anything if you got the grant.
I would not need anything, correct. That's correct. And they're supposed to be released by the end of March, the grant application, so.
So, so the other question is on, in the water section on the loop to Straits Road.
Okay, so let's have that discussion. So that was a plan that we were looking at under ARPA at one point in time. After some discussions with the water superintendent and others, that my understanding now is that a landowner on Cronin Hill has already supplied pipes to a preliminary subdivision that was approved down there somewhere that could loop the system through there. So I would like to, instead of doing the interconnection from Straits Road to Depot, is to take that money and do a, the original plan that we applied for under ARPA, to do something at the wastewater plant. Because as you know, as you toured there, that was one of the questions, I guess, that came up, about the water quality at that building.
Right. I thought the water was going to be fixed through, we were going to.
It was part of that 12 million, I thought.
Part of the 12 million. Isn't that right?
Yes, it's in there.
It's in there. So, so part of the, that it will, will take care of bringing water down to the plant.
I think our thought last time, Phil, was, like, for the year that we're going to have to wait to figure out whether we're actually going to do that project or not, we could bring in a lot of water for, you know, that amount of money. While we wait out the year to see what happens. And then if we, for whatever reason, we don't do the thing, it's not, whatever, it does not include it, for some reason it doesn't get folded into that project, then we could consider doing it.
Yeah.
So then how would the water line be down Straits Road? It would go, it wouldn't go down Straits?
It would cross country to.
Yeah, so, so just pass what I call.
Where Frank has all those, okay.
Yep, yep. You could, you could, you could loop, you could loop that way, because Cronin Hill has got obviously a water line there. So eventually, if that project ever, if they ever do anything with it, then that, that would be the ideal place.
So the water, so in other words, where it ends now, there'd be a gap, because some of those houses feed in off Cronin Hill anyway, right?
Yes, yes.
And so then, then those, those would feed in off Cronin Hill, and then it would start there and go down the other end of Straits. Am I making, is that right? In other words, or is it not going to go down Straits at all?
Well, it already, well, yeah, it's not going to go all the.
It would loop from the end of where we end.
Yeah, it would loop the end, and it would go over the Cronin. So, so all those people on your end of Straits Road, that water would flow, you know, flow through, you know.
Just down to Cronin.
Yeah, yeah, because, you know, and.
And then it would go from, it wouldn't go past that section. So it wouldn't go past Black Birch?
No.
It's, right, it's before Black Birch, and it would then loop down Cronin Hill, down Cronin Hill, okay.
Yeah, and part of the issue there is there's a lot of protected land that goes down on Straits Road, and, you know, so why do we want to run water that way?
I think it wasn't originally, when the people contributed into the Cronin Hill, that, that certain landowner, that was part of it, that it was going to, it was eventually going to loop into that, right?
Yes, it was, for sure.
Yeah.
Yeah. That was back when we were on the board. But there's also some building lots down Straits Road. Would they, and, so there'd still be lots down there that would not have water. Is that right?
Where are there building lots down Straits Road?
Well, I mean, I would assume most of Straits Road would qualify as building.
Actually, most of it wouldn't.
Really?
Yeah. You know, there, there are some on the east side of the, there's potential some on the east side, but some on the west side, there's, next to Black Birch is APR land, and then you've got the Slawoski property, which has been preserved right by the town.
Then you're in APR.
And then we're, yeah, but we're across the way, and then we're next to you. But then there's what, you know, there's just beyond the old Slawoski property going south, there's the two properties there, I suppose, potentially, but, you know.
So I guess with all that being said, that, that capital project comes off until we decide, see what happens with the upgrades at the wastewater plant.
Yeah, yeah. Did we have other questions on stuff? That was water.
Yeah.
Sewer didn't have anything, because they're going for the whole caboodle, so. Yeah, I see.
So I just have.
That was it?
Go ahead. I just have one question about the ARPA funds. So are we going to do anything else under the ARPA funds?
Probably.
Okay, just curious.
Like, like we said, Raymond Avenue could be either ARPA, it could be Free Cash.
Got your transfer switches and generators for the Ferry Street and, what's the other one?
We decided, though, I thought.
Ferry Street.
Those we already decided.
Those were already decided.
You know, and, and I think the, yes, and then we could, some of the generators, but, but, did we decide two of them?
There was only two more things, I think, that we had, right?
Right, and, and some of those generators are already in the 12 million, I believe.
All of them are.
All of them are in the 12 million.
But those two stations are your other two critical ones besides Maple.
Yes.
Those go down, a lot of stuff goes down.
Right. Right.
But we're also looking to not spend the entire amount of ARPA funds in year one.
Right.
Yeah, well, they're, they're handy because they don't require town meeting appropriations to, if an emergency comes up in the middle of the year, you could just spend them. You don't have to have a special town meeting to do it.
And, 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 and we do have a fair amount of free cash money, and so we can use that on some of that. I, I think this year is a little bit of an anomaly. I believe next year, our free cash will be back to reality, but, you know, we can take, take advantage of it.
While you can.
Yes, exactly.
Spend it while you got it.
Right, right.
Okay, so we still have another pile of budgets to get to. Are you guys all set?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Phil.
Thank you all. Thanks, David. Thanks, Phil.
A lot of work goes into that. We appreciate it. Thank you, Garrett.
Thanks, Garrett. All right. We have, are we, are we doing Marlene now?
Yes, I think so.
All right, so we don't have to be bored to hell. We already, we already talked about Town Hall operations.
Yes, everybody should have.
There was a new pile of them that were handed out tonight?
I don't think you had them at all, right?
Yep.
Now, in there was animal control and animal inspector.
Right on top is the animal control.
Okay, hold on. I got to go back. That's why I have to. You have animal control. Yep. Okay. Oh, there, there we go. There was no, I believe there's no, no, there's a.
There is an increase.
On animal control.
Yep.
For uniforms. Scott is, would like to increase the, the uniform cost for a new patrol jacket and some sweatshirts. It seems pretty reasonable.
Scott's so underpaid as it is.
Give him a sweatshirt.
Yeah.
So the only increase is on the expense side.
Okay.
All right.
Animal inspector.
Level funded.
And that is level funded, yeah. Annual report is level funded.
Is it level funded?
Excellent.
Annual report, yes, I believe it is.
No, no, the animal inspector. I thought it was an increase.
Oh. Wait a minute.
There's two animal.
Oh, it's, it's not. There we go.
Yep.
Yep, okay.
See, it shouldn't be, yeah.
Yep, all right, annual report.
We covered. We covered cable last week.
We did cable.
Does anybody have any questions about that?
Nope.
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 I think we covered the audit last week as well.
It's gonna cost us a little bit more.
Thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is what it is.
And so I, actually, I updated this because I had increa-, I had had $5,000 in there for the, um ARPA funds audit, and actually, ARPA funds is taking, is funding that cost, that budget. So I reduced this.
So you reduced that, okay. Looks like our property insurance went up.
Property insurance, yes, so we're looking at a 2.5% increase for the next fiscal year.
It's like they know what the tax rate.
Amazing, huh?
All right.
Legal is, um, level funded. No, I, actually, I'm sorry, I did increase that a little bit. Two thousand.
I, I was just thinking about how Eric and now Tony have broken out their budget. Have we ever broken out, and I was thinking back to the, um, Stephanie and Bob and have we, have you have, can you break that out so we know?
Council, you mean?
Yeah, council out so we know who's, who's using it?
Town council? Oh, oh, um... So I have to ask council...
Maybe not this year, but maybe next year. It would be interesting to know, because if the planning board is trying to, you know, part of what they're trying to do is we can save on some legal, then it would be nice to know.
But a town planner still wouldn't be able to render any kind of legal decision.
Oh, understood.
So, you know...
So I'd have to ask council to do that when he bills us. So he would, you know, depending on, you know, a department that he's done with.
It's not broken out like that.
I mean, it's itemized, the, the work that's done, you know, whether it's a telephone conversation with me or with somebody on the planning board, but it's not it's just, yeah, one continued list. It's not itemized, um, by department.
It would be, it would be good if we could break, break it out.
It would be interesting to see. I mean, I think it would probably be variable from year to year.
Sure it would.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
All right.
I could ask them.
All right.
So that's a reasonable increase for council, I think.
Yeah.
All right, selectmen, we didn't...
Yeah, council raised his fees, um...
Yeah, but his total budget's 32,000, so I don't know, you know, I'm guessing the majority's through, through you, Marlene, as far as
It is, it is.
On behalf of the select board or whatever.
And just in case the finance committee doesn't know, so if any department, board committee wants to use town council, they have to contact me. So, you know, sometimes if
Yes.
If it's something I can, can research, but like, planning board, pretty much, we need town council, um, so...
Yeah, yeah, no, no, and, and, yeah.
And so I, and town council's very good about responding. When he responds to the department, board or committee, he copies me on the response, so I
He does a great job.
I see the services that he provides, yeah.
He does, he does do a great job. Okay, select board.
Level funded. Look at us.
I thought we were getting big raises this year.
Next year.
My only concern, Marlene, is on the technology, is this is just for services. I don't see anything, or is there gonna be any need for a new computer, a new laptop?
So this doesn't, it just does include replacements right now. The number could change. But we're still, we're, we made a transition from uh, Peregus IT to Souzer IT, and, um so they're currently looking at our capital needs. Normally, I would have that information a lot sooner, but because there's still, you know...
I'd be curious on their servers and...
They're doing an assessment of the network of all the town computers.
That's important for this budget.
What we're doing is working off of the list that had been compiled by Peregus for, and it included fiscal year '23, but we need to work with Souzer and make sure that that's accurate.
Cuz that could be a big change on this budget.
What could be a change?
Or if you needed additional equipment and stuff.
Oh, it could be. I'm hoping it's, I mean, we had some costs for this fiscal year, um, that we added. Those were one, some of it was one-time costs, um, so I left the budget. Actually, no, I did increase it because of the archive social. So, before increasing the budget for FY '23 to cover costs for, um archive social, I left that budget alone. I didn't increase it or reduce it.
No, what I'm trying to, what I'm, what I'm saying is like, a new laptop or a new computer, are there any needs in the department?
There, there are.
Because that, that could possibly be a one-time deal with Apple, maybe, cuz it's a one-time shot. Have you needed a couple of new computers, or? That's what I'm referring to.
There are, cuz we like a laptop for the administrative staff. The Board of Health has a laptop that Karen uses, but the administrative staff, you know, administrative assistant doesn't have a, a laptop, and currently Karen uses the Board of Health laptop.
So is that included in here? It's not, right?
It is right now.
Oh, it is, okay.
But for anything...
60,000.
Right. Right. It is. But what I'm saying is if Souzer, after completing the assessment of all the, the town's hardware, you know, recommends some kind of, um improvements or things that we need to do, um, updates, upgrades, then I will bring that forward to the finance committee and select board.
All right, it'd be nice.
Is it the possibility of just moving away from these servers altogether?
And doing cloud computing?
Well, we are, we did. We moved, well, actually, I had a conversation with them last week. So we have the network that is backed up, and then for the current fiscal year, we had funded the technology budget to have a remote backup to the cloud. What Souzer is talking about is just having everything on the cloud, rather than, you're right, rather than having the server.
That's really the way to go.
They're expensive to replace, and, you know, like, unless it's brand-new now.
And then you come obsolete rather quickly.
Yeah, so that's something they're looking at. So ultimately, I'm thinking, but I'm not an IT person, that maybe this budget could be reduced.
Yeah. After the changeovers.
They'll figure out a way to charge us more, but yes.
Yeah. I, um yeah, I, I certainly am hopeful. Things did not start out very well with Souzer IT, but, um, I hope going forward that we'll certainly see some improvements, but, yeah. There was some, some red flags in the beginning, and I was starting to regret
The change.
Regret the change, yeah. But, um there, there was another vendor that I was very close to accepting, and
But we're all with you.
But anyway, I'm moving past what's
We're all getting in sync now?
Yeah, I hope so.
Right, and your current budget is within you're, you're, you're in good, a good place with your current budget?
The technology budget, yes.
Yeah, 22. Okay. And then next is the town administrator and and staff.
Yeah, so this is, yes, this includes wages and expenses, and the only increase is a contractual increase.
Oh, the contractual increase.
And that's it.
But it, does it include these, are, is the, is everybody contractual, or is it just one?
Just one.
Yep.
And one thing I had discovered going through this budget process, and Sharon and I were talking, I had plugged in the salaries that had been voted at town meeting, and of course, those included a 2% increase, the COLA that was given for FY '22, and Sharon was very good and got together with me, because then I realized I didn't have the 2.3% increase that some physicians had received, so I had to go through. So the budget that you'd received last week that I forwarded to you?
Yeah.
A lot of, you know, in places, the wages have, salaries have changed because I updated the number to include the 2.3% that some physicians have received. And, and that was true with, with the administrative staff. There was a 2.3% given to them. So these numbers reflect everything that's been given in this fiscal year.
Okay. But it doesn't include, besides the contractual, it doesn't include anybody else's, so... Okay.
No.
Yeah, okay, winter celebration.
That's level funded.
Level funded.
That poor, poor account.
But will it be a Saturday or a Sunday? That's the question.
Friday is very late.
My budget doesn't deal with that.
Sorry, I couldn't help myself.
As long as it comes in under the $100 block.
Yeah, right.
Did we go through town hall operations? I don't remember seeing that one.
I thought we did.
Oh, okay.
I feel like we're...
You hope so? Okay.
Wasn't that, wait a minute.
Was it one of the ones you gave us? We went through all of them.
Should've been in there.
No, no. Town administrator. I don't see town hall operations.
Town hall operations is missing.
Okay, hold on.
Yeah, that, that includes the copier and the leases, the lease for the copier and the postage meter.
Oh, right, uh, yeah, I don't remember seeing that one.
And papers, you know, for the copy.
I don't remember seeing that one.
Paper supplies for the copier, yeah.
Do you have your copy there?
I don't have it here.
Oh, I was gonna say, just what's the difference? Oh, you have it?
I may have missed it out.
Huh?
You do?
No.
Okay.
No, that's okay.
I wonder if it's stapled to another one?
Does it happen to be, uh, level funded by then, or?
It is.
Oh.
Okay. So I'm glad you have it, and no, I didn't get it either. Did you have it, Diane?
Not in tonight's stuff. I might have it in that big pile from other weeks.
I'm looking.
But it is level funded, so.
It appears to be, yep.
Oh, I found it. There we go. It's a miracle. Thank you, Karen. There we go. Oh, it's level funded, okay. Okay, so that's all your budgets?
Yes, it is.
All right, so next week, so next, next week, we meet with the treasurer.
The treasurer, accountant, and assessors.
Money people.
And, and that's it?
That will be everybody.
Okay, and have you...
So I have the...
You're gonna put the preliminary spreadsheet up so we can see all the great news?
Now, John, I don't have to share this, right? I didn't think so. Okay, yeah, cuz you're gonna put it on the...
Cuz this is very preliminary.
Yeah, very.
And, and I guess I should ask, I mean, have you even, have you put some of the revenue numbers in?
Um, yes.
Do we need to shut the lights off to see it?
Yeah.
Do we get any popcorn?
We'll do that next time, John.
Must be a Panasonic.
You know what the rule is with farmers? You never turn the lights off, cuz we'll all fall asleep. All right. So...
Can that be, John, can that be raised a little to use up more of the screen? Without reinventing the wheel? Like, can, can the device, can the, can the projector be raised?
You're still looking at the bottom of the computer thing. You're not...
Yeah, what I have, so, yeah, it goes, on my screen, tax rate reduction is at the bottom, yes, that's correct.
Okay.
That is, it's, yeah, up here is sort of just taking up a lot of room.
So what's our page one?
So this tab is the budget recap.
Yeah.
And, um, the first part here is all our revenue.
Yeah.
Revenue estimated receipts. So these are, you know, based on the governor's proposal.
Right.
Local receipts down here, we'll get down to that a little further. But we are getting numbers plugged in here, and we have other financing sources.
Enterprise funds are down?
Right. The what's fund?
Enterprise fund receipts.
Well, we probably don't, yeah, we don't have, I don't no, well, we, we'll get down there. I, I don't, well, let me just go down here to enterprise. Here's cable, water, and sewer. So estimated receipts, so we, I...
Yeah, we gotta fix that number.
I will. I, I think I had a conversation, or I looked at what our current, I asked Lori what our current receipts are. So that would just be an estimate, and of course, it's not a full year, close to a full year yet, so that will, that will definitely change.
I mean, it's gonna be at least the 1.9
Or whatever it was last year.
1.2 that was on there, and then 5% above that, right, probably, so...
Yeah, I'm confident that will, that will increase.
Yeah.
Okay. And then we don't have anything in the tax rate reduction yet. And we'll get down here, and then we'll I haven't put in the formula yet for the budget, and I will be doing that very soon, again, for the articles. There is a tab for appropriation of special articles.
Yeah.
And I'll have a formula in there. So we get down here, and again, this, these numbers are all, you know, based on other numbers in, in the spreadsheet. I talked to Jenny about new growth, and she's comfortable leaving it at 60,000. Her board is going to be meeting soon, and, um if that should change, you know, she'll let me know, but she's comfortable with it at 60,000. I'm just hoping we could increase it, cuz I know there is some, some building going on. The building across the street, we probably won't pick that up until, well, if, they're, they're expecting to start having avail, units available later this spring, summer, so we won't see a full year taxes coming in. The full assessment wouldn't be until next January. So now we get into state receipts.
School choice.
And so this number here at the bottom, $2,114,745, the number you saw at the top, the state receipts, and again, it's based on the governor's budget.
Are these numbers, those are actual numbers, known numbers?
These numbers plugged in here?
Yes.
Yeah, is, from the cherry sheet.
Okay.
But that could change once we get the house numbers. Could change all that.
Right.
And probably the house numbers are generally closer to anyway, okay.
They usually go up a little bit. And then the, the charges and assessments. And that's considerably higher here.
Why is that? School choice.
Charter school.
Sending.
School choice sending is
Yeah, sending's actually down.
And then the charter school sending is increased.
Down a student, basically.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? It's about 5,000 a student, roughly, that leaves. 5,000 that comes in, you know?
Yep.
But if you go, if you go back up for one second, Marlene, the school choice end is, is a little concerning, because look at fiscal year '21. 968 last year, 911, and this year, 785.
Yeah.
If, if that stays as in the government's budget.
That's why I asked if those numbers were...
Because of the school department's looking to use money that's anticipated, and I know, there's no way of knowing that now until kids show up in the classroom. But I mean, that, you know what I mean? They're, they're gonna maybe have to lower what portion of school choice they want to use to offset their budget.
Well, and I, there, I did raise some concerns with the enrollment numbers they were using in their budget.
Yeah. But anyways, that, that's another topic. But that, that's just a big change, 180,000 in two years. Yeah.
So the net receipts would be 837,650. And we get into the enterprise budgets. Cable, this could possibly change. As you know, we're, we're negotiating a contract with Comcast.
That could change up or down, right, Marlene?
Yeah. And then you have water and sewer. We will be looking at that number.
Yep.
Changing that.
More closely, yeah.
And then we get it, I haven't plugged in estimated receipts for CPA revenues. I need to talk with the accountant about that. And then we get into local receipts, and it's pretty much, you know, we're just using the, the same numbers that we plugged for the recap in the fall.
We are, we're not expecting any cannabis fees yet?
Should be some cannabis fees, right?
We should be getting some cannabis fees.
Uh, no, well, the first one will be...
The people down there, right?
Yeah, but that's, they have 12 months, what was?
14, the 14th month, so would I say that was May or June that they would be making their first payment?
Of this year.
Yeah.
So, so in theory...
There'll be something then.
There'll be, should be something there for next year, too, or for our...
And beyond.
Yeah, and beyond. Well, it's five years, right? What's the agreement?
How many? Well, it's five years, and then you renew it. Are we up it to something?
Right.
And we, we have, we have pending agreements and pending projects.
Right.
I should probably already know the answer to this, but where do the pilot, where do the, uh, solar, where do the pilot wanna go in there?
Well, and a few years ago, the, the very first pilot we entered into, we had plugged that number, and DOR slapped our hands for that. We, that's not what this is for. It's handled differently.
But I mean, we're getting...
That's, we are, we are receiving it, but it, it's not...
But where does?
It's not reported here under local receipts.
Oh, okay. And we'll come to, I guess, that's like, is there another?
It's right there, payments in lieu of taxes.
That is something else. That is not, that is not for the solar projects that we have.
So who's paying, who's paying that pilot?
I'll have to find out from the treasurer's office to see who that is.
That might be, um, state-owned land. Is that the patient, or do we?
Can't be getting $12,000.
We wouldn't be getting that. I know it's not for the solar projects.
Any, any state-owned land, though, gets a payment in lieu of taxes.
Yes.
Oh, that could be...
So it could be all, it's any state-owned land in town.
It's nice having it up there.
It's just on the property.
Yeah, right.
Can you see that okay up there?
Yeah.
I don't know what other land they own in town. Not much.
Yeah.
All right. So we don't know what we're gonna use for free cash yet, so I haven't plugged a number in. But as we go along, when we start to decide, or you decide what will be funded from free cash, and, you know, we'll be plugging a number in there. So $12,000 comes from school choice to pay the DPW directors.
Facility manager.
Facility, yeah. And then...
Didn't they ask to have that taken out?
No.
They did? Oh, I'm not aware of that.
They didn't? Okay.
Well, they did, but it was reneged or whatever.
Okay.
Ambulance receipts, I have it high, if I have anything highlighted in yellow, it's because I need to follow up on it. So I, I'm still not sure what the ambulance budget is going to be, so I haven't put a number in there yet. Then we have the cemetery perpetual care, which is there every year. Chapter 90, we received notification, estimated. So chapter 90 is 24475, it's less than what...
Yeah, we're getting less. I thought the state had...
The heck.
Okay, so this is still a, really an artificial number down here.
Yep.
We have numbers to plug in. And then I have just added some items here, prior year expenses, if you should decide to recommend free cash to pay for the prior year expenses. And last year, we divvied up snow and ice. We funded a portion of it through free cash, and then the other portion, we just took care of it on the recap. So I just, I put those there just for talking points. Okay, so that's the recap sheet. Any questions on that?
That's our, that's...
A good start.
There's no way there.
Yeah.
And then we go to budgets. And...
Did you plug in all the budgets as presented?
I have, not all of them. Because I knew there's gonna be some discussion. And then others, I, you know, was pretty comfortable with plugging a number, and I, if there was a change or an increase, I highlighted that. So again, here, moderator, select board, no changes. Town administrator, that reflects a 2% contractual increase. Going down. So the accountant's budget, this, this reflects the audit and, so what did I say here? Yeah, 91,000 plus the cost for the auditor.
Isn't the audit, and then that slimmed down? Thought the audit and OEPED was...
Oh, the audit's down here, accountant's here.
Yes.
Okay, yeah, that's right.
Right, and, and the audit...
The accountant must be the additional 6%.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so this really should be 95,000 right here, because 91,000 of the 95,000 is the contract with Melanson, and then there is accounting expenses that we have to make sure we cover. They have operating expenses.
Is the 95, didn't, didn't they ask for an increase? Is it not, Melanson Heath?
They did, and that's what I'm saying.
That's the increase.
This, this increase, this number...
Was 80,000, and now it's 95.
It's 91.
It was 85.
Plus there's operating expenses built into this budget.
By who, by Melanson?
No, we, we have, the accountant's budget has always had an expense account.
Okay.
So we, so we, we, we pay for FedEx charges. We, we ship the warrant every week, so there's postage or shipping expenses. And then for Tyler and Vadar...
I thought you said that it was expenses for Melanson, and I, I thought you said that that was expenses was built into their budget.
Well, yeah, accounting expenses. So all this is, yeah, Melanson and just operating expenses.
So, I mean, we've already gone through all of these, and obviously, at some point, we'll all see this on the spreadsheet. I mean, we still have two executive sessions tonight. Were we planning on going through this line by line right now?
I, I don't have to, whatever you would like.
I mean, I don't think there's much to garner from this, because...
There isn't.
There's so many unknowns in there.
We don't have the revenue numbers even in, so you don't...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Until you can kind of guess.
I mean, it's great to see the amount of work you've done here, Marlene, because it's a ton of work.
And, so, yeah, every, every budget is here, every operating budget is here, and then the last tab is just the articles. So, that's, that's about it. Yeah, no, I certainly
So...
didn't intend to, but if you wanted to go through, yeah.
No.
It's too early.
We gotta see the house budget before we...
We do, yeah.
Yeah, I'm...
So, so a question I have is, so do we want Marlene to put in the budgets as...
Good question.
As requested?
As requested, and, you know, and, and then if she puts them in as requested, I mean, we know who asked for increases, and then as we see what the bottom line is, and then we decide...
Go back in and change it.
He either, he either add it in, or you back it out.
Right, right.
I'm thinking we can just back out.
I think they should go in as requested, I mean, that's...
Okay.
And we'll back them out.
That's our starting point.
Back them out as we need to, yeah. 'Cause, yeah.
Particularly when you see it up against the, you know, revenues and all of that.
Yes.
That's how you start, yeah. You begin balancing.
But I think it's, I don't think it's fair to not put in what they requested.
No, I agree.
Yeah.
I agree.
Yep, I agree as well.
We've, we've done it various ways, and actually, in the, I think in the fairly recent past, we've done both.
Yep.
So we've had a line that is as requested, and then a line that is level funded next to each other, so you can...
Right, and then we would refer to the budget that came in as to why is this one $15,000 higher? And, you know, as a kind of a memory jogger is.
Right.
Yep. Yeah, you know, I think this is good, we got them.
Well, these sheets are really helpful, that they're so uniform.
Yeah.
So when we're going through them, you know, we used to get things that were not as uniform.
Right.
Would you prefer to see, or like to see, the requested column built into that workbook?
Yes.
The department's requested.
Yes.
It's not in there, okay.
It's not.
Let's put, let's put the, put the requested minus... If, if somebody requested sal, well, what do you, what do you want? I mean, I would suggest no salary increases. Unless it's contractual or through...
Negotiated.
Is that a huge task, to add that?
It will be, but, yeah, unless I wait until next year.
You know what I mean, like, I think we can't.
Right.
It's gonna be problematic if you allow some salary increases in, and then others are not.
Budget-wise, to add.
Some people requested salary increases that are not contractual.
Well, no, I meant adding the requested budget versus the...
It's just because, you know, of all the formulas you have in there, so it could...
Well, like, the, the police department, and then just thinking off the top of my head, his request was primarily salary increase.
Right.
And so... But in the past, we haven't, we've always dealt with that kind of separately, and so...
And as uniformly as possible.
So right now, I just have his, the contractual increase in there, but he's looking for additional money in salaries.
Right.
And I didn't...
So you put the contractual in there.
I put the contractual in there.
The only problem I have with it just is, we didn't ask everybody to put in whatever they want for salary increases. And so now, you know what I mean, like...
Some people did, and some people didn't.
Some people did, and some people didn't.
Right.
So if you, if you give out the ones that, you know, and then don't, don't do the ones that didn't ask, because we didn't tell them, it's gonna be kind of weird, right?
Right.
And we often run into, should a department head be able to, we'll just take the police department for an example, because there's, it's not a huge department, you know, should they be able to sort of tweak what their employees are getting to meet what's happening, you know, for that position elsewhere type, you know, it's...
I don't really know the answer to that question.
Yeah, but I mean, it's...
Except to say that the select board has always set salaries.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean...
But if it's within a, you know...
In the last 20 years.
But I, but I often say, here, here's your budget, do with it what you want, right? And, and there's, I guess, pros and cons to that, right?
Well, and last year, we...
Yes.
We gave, we, we decided a 2% to all non-contractual, non-negotiated, and then we came up with an additional...
2.3, I think?
Yes.
2.3, which was, shall we call discretionary? And so that, because what happens in the course of a year, you know, once we decide the budget, going forward, you're gonna negotiate, and other people are gonna negotiate salaries, there's gotta be some money somewhere to figure that out, right? So I don't know if we wanna, you know, if we'll be able to do that again, and who knows?
My only question about that would be, if you do that, if you give department heads money and just say you decide what you wanna do with it, what do we do, how do we hold them accountable for what happens next? So if you decide, well, I need to hire three more people, and I'm gonna pay everyone half as much, but then you can't actually hire anyone, everyone quits, do we then fire the department head and find somebody who does it differently? You know what I mean, like?
Yeah, oh, there's, there's...
Because then you're saying, basically, the options are all up to you, but if the options are all up to you, then in the end, are you responsible for everything that happens next?
Well, and you could also get into a situation where, what, you know, expenses maybe aren't done in the way they should be, and then you have to come back to the finance committee, and at that point, you could say, well, we need it because our electricity was higher, because you, if you're not giving any framework for the...
Or we need choices, you know what I mean, that were different. We bought a new car for the department, but we had to let one of the staff people go.
Right.
Right, well, yes, so...
Is that okay, you know?
Well, to qualify my comment, it was sort of, from a salary perspective, you know, if they came back and said, we didn't spend whatever, $4,000 or something, I'd like to see my peop, my five people all get a dollar raise. I mean, you know, not, not, not get some materials that you need in order to give people some raises, but, but it was kind of give a little flexibility, right? They're a department head, I mean, you know, but...
I think, I think the only problem with that just comes with, then you, you just wind up with very specific problems around, like, what happens when, you know, the administrative assistance department head asks for a 2% raise, and the assessor's supervising head asks for a 10% raise for their administrative support person? Then you have people doing the same jobs next to each other in the offices in town, and one person's making significantly more than the other.
It's already happening, Sean.
Yeah. No, I know, but I'm saying, like...
Because there isn't a, of, anyways, we're not gonna settle that now, and it's nine o'clock, but...
Yeah, it's good to have. It brings up one other point, and I don't wanna go too far into this, but, you know, there's, we've talked a little bit about, like, the Chromebooks and the turnout gear, and if that should be on the capital plan or just rolled into those budgets. The, the concern for me is, those are very specific things that we have to, we know we have to replace, and we wanna stay on top of that. My concern is, rolling anything into a budget then kind of makes it fair game for that department to... Yeah, exactly, and then we're not upgrading, you know, this particular equipment, and so that's my...
Well, that relates to, I think, exactly what you just said.
Well, that's why I brought it up, because it does fold into that.
I mean, I mean, technically, well, I think, so the question is not, should it be on the capital plan? The question is, how should it be funded? Because technically, it, it is on the capital plan by, by the financial rules that we adopted. Now, we can certainly have a conversation about whether those should be different rules, but they fall under the rules of like items at over $10,000 that last five years, which is the minimum standard, basically. So, I mean, I, I could make an argument that that minimum standard should be raised.
Yeah, we, didn't we talk about this early on?
Yeah, we talked about it, but we haven't, yeah. No, but, I mean, I went back and looked at the regulations that we adopted, and that's what it is. That's what the regulation is, so you have to change that, if you wanna change it proactively.
But that's part of what I see as a danger in doing that. If you raise those standards, and then you put items like... If you raise those standards and then you put items like and I'm just using Chromebooks and turnout gear because that's what we ra, raise it as an issue this year. It does, you're right about, it could be, it could be tempting for departments to say, well, jeez, we have these other needs, maybe we could forego some of these things this year and...
Yeah. I mean theoretically, I guess, like those things...
I'm not saying either of those departments would do that. It just opens it up for that.
But if it is a priority and you're having those additional funds added to your budget, then you should be using it for that.
Yeah.
I think it's, it should be built on trust.
Could be in operations.
And that's exactly what I meant about the accountability, right?
Right, yeah.
So if, if the fire chief, hypothetically, if a hypothetical fire chief, right, says, all right, here's, I'm not gonna buy the turnout gear and then, you know, with three years down the road, we have no turnout gear and they can't respond to fires anymore and they come in and say, hey, finance committee and select board, we can't respond to fires anymore, so you need to buy us the turnout gear, do we fire the fire chief? You know what I mean? That would seem like what you'd have to do because, you know, otherwise, people are gonna do exactly, people would be incentivized to do exactly what you're saying, which is take the things that are gonna be necessities, not buy them, and then come back to the finance committee and select board and say, hey, we need to buy them.
And maybe legitimately because the budgets were so tight that something had to give and that was something, well, maybe, maybe we could put it off another year. And I, I just think that those, it's just kind of dovetails with what you were just talking about and I think that those things should stay on the capital plan with, you know, fun, the same typical funding sources we access for capital items.
If you really need them every year, though. See, that's, there you get into, you, you know...
I mean, that's the plan.
We have an eight-year plan of, of, well...
Well, that also comes back to distrust and honor system. If you don't need them, you don't need them.
You know what I mean? So, yeah, right. Well, that's what I'm saying, you know?
I mean, you, you have to buy them, yeah.
Need them. Not buy things because you have money sitting there to buy them, if you don't really need them, right? I'd, I'd rather have a department come in and say, we need 100 Chromebooks, I'm, I'm just saying.
Yeah.
And then we give them the money for the 100 Chromebooks rather than, you know, or, or show us a plan.
Well, that's what I think, I think
Show us the plan.
These two particular items are part of a plan. So maybe they're, you know, they're just the examples that, that opened up the discussion on it.
Oh, I agree, but it's the backup.
I'm not saying either of those departments or either of those expenditures are what I worry about, but it just opens the discussion for it.
I just think that's a hard way to do capital planning if that's what you want to do.
Well, they should be in the operations, but first off.
Like, for example, that we're gonna buy Chromebooks.
That's exactly what I'm saying.
We're gonna keep them for five years and then we're gonna replace them all at once. So every five years, it costs us $100,000, you know?
That's not how they, I, I hear you.
That, that's hard to plan for, you know, like, that's why I think in all these cases, like with the Air Packs, we just did that a while back, with the turnout gear, with the Chromebooks, like, that's why you're on a rotating replacement schedule because otherwise, you're shifting big amounts of money between this budget and that budget every year and try to keep track of where is that money needed next year and where's it, was it last year?
And it's kind of what the lease program solves with our vehicle acquisition problems.
It does.
Where we used to need massive, you know, huge expensive vehicles in different years and there was a lot of deferral.
Right.
And we kept vehicles on the road much longer than they ever needed to be on the road.
Yes, except for imagine if those were in different, separate budgets.
Right.
It would be even worse because not, it wouldn't just be going to town floor and saying, oh, we need to buy a dump truck, we need to buy a COA van. It would be, the money needs to be moved this year from highway to COA, but somebody keep track next year because it's gonna need to go to school because they're gonna need to replace their van, you know? You'd be constantly moving it around all over the place and you'd never be able to really easily compare year to year what people are spending, you know what I mean? That you'd have to have... I mean, if you read the capital plan thing, it, it actually almost kind of envisions a different process altogether, one that we're not using, which I'm not advocating for. I'm just telling you, if you read it, 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 to me, it seems to be envisioning a process with a capital budget where like you're sort of spending, you're setting that money aside and spending it, like developing an actual budget that the capital planning committee is sort of spending. It seems to be how it kind of reads. And I'm not sure, I mean, that's not exactly what we do and I'm not sure we, we want to do that, I mean,
Right.
given that it's all the same people.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? Like, how many different things do you want to have doing different things with all the same people, but... So I, I don't know. There's different ways to look at it, but I think that those things do need to be on capital planning based on the, on the bylaw and the, and the regulation or whatever you want to call it. But the question of the funding source could be an open question.
Mm-hmm.
So theoretically, we've never done this, but theoretically, there could be a capital plan budget that cited as its funding source, the fire department budget or the school department budget, you know, taxation as a funding source essentially. We just, we tend not to do that because we usually use free cash or other, other available funds.
Right. Well, I know some of the old computer requests on capital planning, when it was $10,000, would say taxation or free cash. It was the recommendation. I, I don't remember how we ultimately ended up doing it, but...
Like the compactor says taxation.
Right.
Although, I don't know that we ever intended to, like, how we would do that, yeah.
I get it.
We'd have to put the $8,000 in the transfer station budget
Yep.
and then spend it out of there. But the way we would probably do that would be with free cash, so why?
Right, yeah, it's just a rec, it's just something to have there.
You're just flowing it around, yeah.
Okay.
I'm glad we solved that.
Yeah.
Okay, so... So, scatter school.
We still have two executive sessions.
Oh, good conversations.
So we're meeting, uh, next Tuesday, the 29th?
Yes.
And then we have another meeting scheduled for the 5th, is that correct?
Oh, do we?
I cannot be here on the 5th.
Oh, that's right, you just said that last week.
Yeah, I can't be here.
I am not gonna, I'm likely not gonna be here next meeting in person. Oh, on the 29th?
Yeah.
Okay. But that's just budget review.
So the 29th is with the financial folks, right?
No, 29th is with...
Sharon?
Yes, yep, yep, that's financial.
And then the 5th, we're gonna start taking a stab at things?
We have to start taking a stab.
If we, if we have a meeting?
I mean, you can have it without me, I just won't be here.
Yeah.
When will you be here that week?
I won't be able to be here without me.
That week you're on?
On the 5th, yeah. I'm not available that week.
All right, okay. Well, we're...
It's still, I, no offense to our, to our chair, I, huh?
Don't say it's too early.
No, I was gonna say, I think we should still have a meeting.
We can have a meeting without me, that's fine.
Yeah, and, and you'll know what the, it's on the agenda, so if there's any concerns, Ed or I or Marlene can bring...
You can still get here.
Yeah, that's what I mean, we can still...
Yeah, okay.
I mean, I would feel better
It's like our first cra, well, we're kind of in a flow.
Take a, take a look at it.
I mean, it's, you still have a quorum here.
Yeah.
I mean, because I'm pretty much assuming we're gonna meet
See every Tuesday.
Every Tuesday until we get a budget put together and then it's gonna be town meeting.
Right.
Yeah.
So...
And it'll be the week before a town meeting.
Just a little something to look forward to.
Yes. Then two hours before a town meeting. We won't have, we won't have to do the free cash before a town meeting this year.
Yes.
Yeah, that was exciting.
Oh, remember that year? We expected to have free cash. We were waiting on it. We were waiting on it to be certified and then we were expecting it, yeah, before
Yeah, a couple times, we had to set up all the priorities
Yep.
and wait for it to be certified, come in the day of town meeting to go on it, to actually do it.
It was supposed to be certified on Monday. Town meeting was on Tuesday and I didn't get notice until Wednesday morning they had certified. Talk about being angry.
Yeah, let's not go back to those days.
Okay, so we're going to adjourn regular session, so we need to take a vote, right?
We go selected.
So...
You have two separate executive sessions, different statutes of law.
Make a motion to adjourn?
It was a long one.
Yeah, it was.
Thank you, guys. Where's my, um...
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thanks. Where is my, um... Marlene is gonna make the motion, but I don't have my thing.
Sorry.